Good evening, everyone. If you'll take notice, we have the exit sign here behind us. One to your left and one down the hallway as well in the event of an emergency. Thank you for coming to the planning board this evening, September 18th, 2025. If you'll all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two items on the agenda under public hearing. The first one is Duchess Contracting Corporation. It's off Bishoff Lane, an apartment complex. And then we have Veronese Accessory Apartment. That's a special use. The rules are that you typically have a three-minute length of time there at the podium. You'll need to come to the podium, say your name and your address. Cheryl is going to be taking minutes, or she'll need to enter your name in the minutes. And it needs to be recorded by video as well, and sound and video. You need more time, I'll give you more time, all right? So don't worry about that. If you need more time, I'm not going to interfere with you. So with that being said, can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And would Duchess Contracting Corporation like to come to the podium at this time? No? Not here? Hmm. Hmm. Interesting. Bear with me, let me make a call.
Should I?
No? All right.
I don't think that's necessary.
If they're on their way or not?
This may be right here.
No? No? Okay.
No, I mean, we did get a correspondence from their professional traffic consultant with regard to updates of their discussions with the DOT.
Okay.
So I think that's really one of the biggest things that they've been holding out on while we've been, you know, we've adjourned this, I believe, it was June last time they were here. We gave them a few months to try to deal with DOT, which they've been doing, and they made progress in terms of at least with this left turn lane.
Yeah.
But one of the other big things that they needed to do is work with the DOT on the drainage as well, because as you're probably all familiar, on the side of the road there, there's a roadside swell. And, you know, they have a stormwater management pond that's going to be discharging into that as opposed to where it goes now, which is right towards that house.
Yeah.
So I think those were really the big things. I don't have an update from them on the drainage only on this left turn lane, so I think they're making some progress here, but maybe there might have been a little miscommunication about coming here to represent themselves tonight, so.
Okay. Is there anybody here for Duchess County? The agenda item? I'm sorry, Duchess Contracting, Bishoff Lane, the apartment complex. Mr., you're here, so that changes everything. We can't have you coming here for nothing. So you know what I'd like, so.
Can we adjourn?
What do we do? Can I share some of this with Mr.? Mr.?
Reinhardt?
Reinhardt, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
You have to make a motion to reopen the public hearing so that you can receive comment from whoever's here who wants to make.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Okay. I'm thinking I should give some of this to Mr. Reinhardt to review, no? Is there the DOT, the turning lane and everything? If you want to see it first? I don't know if you're interested, but can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I did.
Just a second?
But I would like to have a discussion about it.
Okay.
I'll second, but can we have a discussion?
Let's get this underway. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Well, I'm okay with, excuse me, what's your name?
Owen.
Owen?
Yeah.
Owen. There's some feedback going on, I think, no?
It stopped.
Stopped? Okay.
I'm open to having the public speak, I want to hear what they have to say.
Sure.
But I'm not here to defend the applicant's application.
Right.
No, we're just going to listen.
Yeah. Present the information that was submitted, is what I'm thinking.
Harold, you look at it also, please.
Yeah. And that way, here's, if you'd like a copy of this too, you can. Mr. Reinhardt, if you'd like, oh, all right, thank you. Here we go. All right. So Dan, I don't know if you want. All right, so this is located right away on both sides, all driveways, wells, ditches, signage, closest mile marker in each direction, all road stripping, you want to go over that?
That's just an exhibit of extra survey that the applicant's representatives are going to get in order to, you know, provide fully detailed plans to the DOT.
So I thought the DOT.
And then that plan shows the left turning lane in its current format right now as proposed to the DOT.
Okay. All right. I'd like at least them to have this since they can look at it at their leisure if they're not, if they're not here to present. So I'll give this to them also. You know what we could do too, if Mr. Reinhardt, you need a few minutes to look at this stuff before, we can also change procedure and move the Veronese Accessory Apartment first.
With the applicant not here, I recommend that you hold up on receiving public comment until the applicant is here.
Okay.
That way they can answer any questions and they're not hanging out there. I don't think there would be any useful time.
Okay. So what I'll do then is I'll hand this over so that they didn't waste their time coming here, right? So I'll try.
They're talking.
It looks easy.
I guess Rob will make some comments that he has.
It looks like the turn lane is going to be on the opposite side of the road. Were they going to widen it?
It's on the same side of the lane as the Veronese.
It's going to be in the center of the lane, westbound.
Rob, would you like to make a comment?
That's existing.
No, no, my only comment, I made my comment.
The other drawing, the other drawing.
He might be coming.
Dan, updated on the status? The applicant isn't here to speak about it. I'm okay with moving forward to the next applicant, or we maybe should ask him to be at the next meeting to represent his project in person.
Sure enough, I mean, we also have a new system here, we have new personnel, so I don't know if something got lost in the mix there, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'll be sure to make sure that they understand that they need to be here next time I speak with them.
So at this point then, we're closing. We're adjourning, right?
Adjourning.
We're adjourning, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn to a date specific, though.
Next month.
Do October 16th?
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn to October 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, sorry for the inconvenience, all right? My apologies. All right. So the second public hearing is the Veronese Accessory Apartments.
How are you? Good evening, how are you tonight? Michael Burtta, architect for the applicant.
Mike, before you get started, if you don't mind, just.
I want to just tell them, Mr. Reinhardt?
Mr. Reinhardt?
You might want to wait a little bit because the guy, he may have been delayed. I can't say that he's coming.
We're not going to open it up again.
Oh, you're not going to?
No, we've already closed it.
Okay, goodbye.
Have a good night, sir.
Just for the record, the planning department is in receipt of the affidavit of publication and certified mailings.
Okay, thank you. Evening. How are you?
Good, how you doing tonight?
Good. If you could just give us a little background for the public.
So, a little background on the project. What we're looking to do is we're proposing a single-story addition behind the garage, the existing garage, which will be a, well, an accessory apartment for in-laws or for parents. And there'll be a shared utility space between the two. The Duchess County Board of Health has approved the septic and it's been signed, and I believe you guys are in kind of receipt of the copy of it. So in doing, in designing this and laying it out, what we've done is, we've done it, designed it so that it's, it goes in with the existing contours that were, there's almost, there's very little regrading that we're going to be doing on the property. Between us and, I believe it's 39, we're going to be installing a hedgerow of combination of spruces to shield it from the neighbor. And really, that's about, I mean, it's a very simple project, you know. The comments that we had from last month's meeting from Dan, we've addressed, there's two minor comments outstanding, which are more adjusting some numbers on the bulk table. And we need to add an initial spot for the chairman to sign, so.
All right, very good. So at this point, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
So I can beckon?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody like to come to the podium and speak about the accessory apartment? Any issues? Please, ma'am. Just announce your name and your address, please, thank you.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm John.
John, my name's Heather Hall. I live at 39 Cunningham Lane. 39 Cunningham Lane, which is the side of the property where a majority of this work will be conducted. I'm on here behalf of my parents, Lynn and Richard Short, we all live at 39. We just had a couple of questions about the proposed plans that we got in the mail. The first one.
Could you, I lost you for a minute. You are a neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
And you're representing the parents?
My parents, yes.
Okay.
So the first question that we have is actually what you just spoke about, that you called it a hedgerow, is that what you called it? There are going to be approximately, it states eight trees, white pine and a spruce mix. So our first question was, on the property line, where will those be placed?
Ma'am? Please. Is there anyone else here for this project, by the way? Good, so if I do this, maybe this is helpful and you're getting some of your answers as we go through.
Yes.
I'll go through each of you and we'll figure it out together.
All right, so that was actually one of our concerns. So on this map that you have proposed, these three pine trees are actually seven to 10 feet onto my parents' property line. So on this map, you have the eight trees lined up with those trees, so therefore these trees cannot be placed there because they'll be on our property.
Well, if I meant, those trees, the location of those trees were taken from the surveyor's map, so I didn't.
Yeah, we also actually had a survey done. And in the property line, there are metal stakes with also the markings where the property line is, and it shows that the three pine trees and a tree, a large tree at the end are all well within our property line. So I think that you might have to relook at this.
We'll have a separate look at it. We'll be playing it in the property line, so we'll be playing it out inside the line.
Well, that's, so that's the follow-up question, you know, these trees are going to be, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I don't want to interrupt you, but yeah, you're actually talking to us.
Oh, okay.
But listen, behind you, it's, it's for me.
Okay, I'm sorry, so.
No, it's nothing, nothing to worry about.
So then the follow-up question is, these trees at some point will grow very large.
Right.
They're going to have a very large diameter. So the problem, the question that we're having is, will these trees be placed well on your property so that it's not then encroaching on our property line? We have, we also have trees on that property line, about 10 feet, I would say, back from the property line, that if these, when, if and when these trees go large, these eight trees, you know, it's going to affect our property as well.
Okay, so let me just rewind a little bit. So there's two conflicting surveys?
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. And these are mitigation measures, these trees?
Yes.
Yes, right? You're protecting viewshed and planting?
I'm sorry?
The ones that we're talking about are going to be, going to be planted, right?
The intent was to block this project from there.
The board had asked us to screen the conditions from the neighbor.
Got it, all right. So anything other than that, because that may be an easy fix.
Okay, yeah, we hope that's an easy fix. At the last meeting that you guys had as a team, you had mentioned that there is a garbage enclosure, and you had asked Michael if it was disclosed to us what this garbage enclosure will look like and things of that sort.
Okay.
We haven't heard anything, so we were just wondering what that looks like and where it will be placed.
Yep. Not a problem. Okay. Any other items? Oh, just so you know, if I don't answer your questions right now.
Yeah.
Don't be offended, because this is a hearing, we're hearing, I'm digesting, they're digesting.
Okay.
We're going to have other people speak, all right? And then we're going to close the public hearing, I think. I don't know, that's up to this board to discern, to decide. And then we will discuss all of these issues and give you some answers, if we can, all of them tonight.
That'd be great, yeah.
All right, perfect.
So the last thing, this is the last note. We are just wondering and curious how the equipment that is needed to build this structure will get to the back portion of the property. There's approximately 24 feet of wiggle room between the structure, the garage, and our property line, so we just wanted to ensure that it stays on that line.
Okay.
Or on, you know, on their property side.
Okay.
But other than that, I want to make it clear, we really wish Butcher Reader and the whole Veronese family the best with this.
Oh, right, good.
We just had some questions.
No, this, this is fine, yeah. And thank you for your, thank you for coming. And who else would like to speak right now? Sir, please? Your name and your address, sir, thank you. Your name and your address.
My name is Sebastian La Verso. My address is 25 Cunningham Lane, I'm on the other side of Butcher and Reader. Don't have any problem with Butcher and Reader, don't have any problem with what they're doing. Only thing I'm concerned about is I received this in the mail today at about 5:00. When I looked at it, it's not clear on here where the property line goes.
Uh-huh.
Okay? This I have from 1987 when I had my house built. It clearly identifies there's a drainage, and it says that my property line goes right in the middle of the drainage, and Butcher's goes in the middle as well, so they kind of butt against each other. This document is not accurate, it doesn't reflect that.
Okay.
So I just want it clarified that the property line goes in the center of the drainage pitch. That's it.
Interesting, yeah.
All the best luck to the Veronese family, just want to make sure that that's clear and corrected on this document.
Want to take a picture if he'll permit?
Sure.
I can actually answer that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
The drainage swell, it's on both pieces of the property. It's actually, the property line does go down the center of it.
Yes.
And we're not showing, we're not showing it on our map, the drainage easement on their property. We're not showing the portion that's on ours.
Okay.
So it's, I believe it's 15 or 20 feet on either side of the property is the drainage easement.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it's, it's on both sides of the property.
Exactly.
But he found, he found something that's not right.
No, no, it's right.
Oh, it is right? Oh.
What he's saying is, I'm not showing, on our map, we're not showing the easement on his property.
Okay.
We're just showing the easement that's on our side. So, yeah.
Satisfied? Okay. Thank you.
It's clarified.
No, it's important. This can lead to all sorts of things, and I'm glad it's resolved, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to approach?
Hi, Anne Bratt, 34 Cunningham Lane, across the street.
All right, floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. We don't oppose the increase in property, we don't, house structure, we don't oppose that.
Okay.
That's not why we're here. We are concerned about calling it an apartment as opposed to an addition, and we're concerned that if it is an accessory apartment, that others other than family could ultimately move in, somebody passes, and now we have apartment in our neighborhood, and now we have a different environment.
Okay.
So that's a concern. Why not just an addition rather than an apartment? Maybe it's a language thing, I don't know, but we discussed that. The other thing is, does it set a standard? Is this precedent setting? So in other words, because we've allowed an apartment to be built in our neighborhood, does that then open the door for other people to also?
Yeah. I'll briefly explain. So it is permitted already, and it's going on throughout our town in our 45 zones. Am I good so far? And it's considered an accessory apartment. And the difference is that, if you will, tell the difference, explain the difference between a full apartment and an accessory apartment, I think is how we can best.
Yeah, I mean, accessory apartment is, is within our code, it's a specially permitted use, allowed in all of our residential zoning districts, and it's prevalent, there's a whole bunch of them throughout the town.
It's the owner occupied.
Yep, one of the, one of the requirements is owner occupation, so the owner has to live in one or the other.
The owner does have to live in it.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's not something that can be rented?
So it doesn't become an apartment house where it's just random people living there. They are allowed to have either the accessory or the main house rented out to somebody who's not family. That's, that's part of it, but.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And as I said, we don't oppose it, it's that we're concerned about what it would do.
Right. It's meant to be, it's a special clause that we use for areas like this. It's meant to be subordinate to the house, it's not meant to be like apartments that you would find in an apartment zone, you know, where it's multifamily and it's dedicated completely to apartments. This is more of an accessory. It's meant to be to provide the ability to have a small apartment in your house, it can't be greater than a certain size, it can't be bigger than your house, and it has to be, the owner has to live there, as soon as the owner leaves that residence, that then becomes, I guess, illegal, or they have to apply for.
And it's a mother-daughter essentially, is that what I would think of as a mother-daughter?
It's a little more than a mother-daughter, because you can, you know, you can't have an apartment tenant that's not related to you, but it's definitely, you can't have more than one, there's only one that's allowed, so it's really a special kind of apartment that's meant to be less intensive in a residential neighborhood.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to have the town attorney elaborate a little further.
One of the characteristics under a town code about this particular special use permit is that it does not run with the land, so meaning that when there's a sale of the house, the special use permit ends, and the new owner can reapply, however, he'd have to go, he or she would have to go through this particular planning board process.
Good, good, perfect.
And the special use permit, isn't it also needed to be renewed annually?
It's every, it's every three years, actually, and the building inspector has the right to, you know, actually, they have to give a letter of consent to allow the building inspector and periodically at her discretion to inspect it to make sure it hasn't become something more than just an accessory apartment, so. There's a lot of little safety nets incorporated in there, and just kind of like what Rob, to expand on what Rob was saying, it is definitely, and the entrances and everything can't make it look like it's more than two entrances from the road and things like that, so it maintains that residential feel.
Good, good, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to approach? No one else? All right, so I'll keep the public hearing open because I'd like to address two things. One, the trees, and the other is the garbage, the garbage containment or enclosure. Could you?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also, at the end, I'd also like to point something out to the board.
Sure, okay. Would you like to do it now?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Burtta did give the deed, the original acquisition deed into the Veronese's from 1980.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe the applicant was directed to provide like an abstract title so we could see those restrictive covenants for the subdivision, to make sure it didn't run afoul of any of the restrictive covenants, a accessory apartment doesn't run afoul of that. So if you could provide those.
All right, yeah, I thought we just needed to provide a deed.
No, but it references the actual restrictive covenants in there.
All right, so please, let's have a conversation about the trees, the garage, garbage, the equipment as well.
Well, we'll talk about the garbage first. We have a six-foot vinyl fence enclosing it, and it will be, I believe it's, I believe it's a.
Now, just out of curiosity, why are we doing this rather than just cams the way homes do?
That was, that was something that was requested by the board to enclose it.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't recall that.
It's within, being that it's a site plan and special use permit, it's within our code for site plan and special use permit to address garbage enclosures.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't.
So it was, it was a comment, technical comment in the review letter.
I see.
And they've accommodated.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a six-foot high vinyl fence, and it's 10 feet off the property line.
Okay. So, I forgot your first name.
Heather.
Heather, okay. Would you like to come back up since it's open? And we'll talk about what your concern specifically is, because we're in a, we're in a position to accommodate you, or the applicant, or us, right?
Well, first I'd like to discuss the surveys, if they're, if you don't mind, Chair.
Fine, yeah, no.
If there's a dispute in surveys, how can we resolve that, Dan? Should we get her survey too, and have you compare the surveys to see if there's a dispute?
I mean, I've, my, my take on it is that they had a licensed land surveyor do a survey and provide locations of all these things, and, you know, we have to, we have to kind of fall back to, you know, his license is on the line. on the line.
So you're satisfied with the way the line is drawn on the map in relation to the house?
Yeah.
It's not the job of this planning board to actually, you know, take sides with competing surveys.
I'm sorry. May I interrupt?
Please.
Which surveyor are you referring to is the one that's...
I'm not sure.
They're both licensed.
Yeah. The applicant prepared a survey using a licensed surveyor.
Yes.
And if I don't, if you don't mind, Dan, he's saying, Dan is mentioning that as long as they provide a licensed surveyor, survey provided by a licensed surveyor, and Dan reviews it, and it looks, it looks fine, that's what we have to rely on.
We also used a licensed surveyor, and we can provide the survey as well. Actually, our surveyor looked at this map that we were discussing with the discrepancy. And he did describe that sometimes the way that the overlay is put on, I'm not, I am, I'm certain I'm not describing this correctly, but when it comes to the design, sometimes the way that the, the computer overlays it, sometimes it does get a little bit skewed and it looks a little bit off. But, I mean, the surveyor came out, he put, I don't know exactly what they're called, those metal stakes in the ground?
Yeah.
The rods. It is very clear that the three pine trees and the large tree at the corner are well within our property line.
Okay.
But it's not reflected on the proposed plans.
So is it possible that there are three other trees?
No.
Next to them that can be confused?
No, there's only, there's a large tree at the end, and then three pine trees separating our two properties.
How big are those pine trees? Do you know?
Large.
36-inch, 24-inch?
Inch? No. Oh, that's right. Um... They're very large trees.
Can I suggest this? Well, let me, let me, I need clarification. You want to approach too? No? Oh, okay. The, my question is, are we talking existing or future trees?
Existing.
Existing trees that are there. So you, okay. So we're talking about these three existing trees. Okay. Those are the, the, the clear colored, right, trees here?
This is their survey.
Okay.
So they're talking about, they're talking about these trees up here.
So they're, they're their trees?
Yeah, they're saying that.
They're saying that they belong to them?
It's over here. Over there.
Mike, is this the first year learning of this discrepancy?
Yes.
I mean, can I suggest that, Mike, the applicant's engineer worked with the neighbor to determine what the discrepancy is and come to reconcile it?
If I may?
Yeah.
Let me just interject this. We're not looking to put our trees on their property. And I have no problem, you know, if you put a note on the, on the site plan that states that the surveyor will come out and locate the property line and maintain five feet and plant the trees a minimum of five feet inside of the property line.
That's perfect.
Just to make sure that everything's fine.
And now these trees... You're not touching them. You're not cutting them down.
They're not touching them.
It's just a matter of who they belong to.
No, it wasn't even that. It was that the...
We showed the new trees in line.
If I may, yeah, the proposed new trees
Gotcha.
Were in line with the current trees.
Right.
Which would indicate that the new proposed trees would be on our property.
They're going to plant new trees.
Right. But you're saying that you're planning on planting them five feet into your property. Perfect.
Well, let me ask you a question. Do you, do, do we need them if you don't want them? I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. I mean, we're asking for this. Is the board willing to...
We were proposing it for your benefit.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't need, oh, that was never something that I think my parents...
We thought you might want a landscape buffer, but if you're not interested...
Oh, we do not need those trees. No.
Okay.
We actually have...
You don't mind looking at them?
We actually have, we already have, we have trees planted there already. So, and I mean, we love Butch and Reader. We don't need to, we don't need to...
Yeah, there was a guy back there, so...
No, we do not need eight massive forests.
You don't mind looking at them either?
I don't want trees.
No? Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. As far as the board's concerned, then, we don't need to propose those trees.
Right.
If the owner decides they want to put trees on their property in the future...
They can.
No, no, they can.
Yeah, yeah, right.
They have, we're not part of that.
Right. Right.
All right. So that solves that.
That's perfect.
I think we just solved that issue. Now, let's talk about the equipment. 24 inches wiggle room to the garage when you're...
For 24 feet.
24, oh, feet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And in order to activate the foundation, it's nothing more than a front end or...
Right.
A small, a small backup.
Backup?
We know about each people.
Right.
So it's pushing to get back there. And any material that'll get back there will be, you know,砖, ready, and skids here.
Okay.
You know, which is, again, lumber, the longest piece of lumber the property will have on there is 12, 14 feet long. So...
All right. So is that satisfying?
Yeah. And then what did you, I'm sorry, what did you say about the garbage?
That's what we're going to do now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Let's just throw it away.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I don't care. Establish it.
Well, next time, how about we do this? We'll loose a fence and we'll put a couple of trees there and hide the garbage.
No.
No? Okay. Let's just get rid of it all.
I thought we'd discuss it.
Well, I think, I think she was asking for clarity on what we were doing. So first, the...
So why don't you explain what your intentions were, where?
We were, we were putting up a three-sided, six-foot-high vinyl fence, discreet, discreet garbage fence. I mean, it's the water party green cans everybody has in the neighborhood. You know, we may have a third can, one of them is official.
Maybe. Yeah. Right. Maybe not. Yeah.
And that's going on the side of the garage you're talking about?
Yes.
Do you want that or just cams?
I mean, ultimately, that's up to the Veronese's. If they want it, that's great. If not, we have no problem with that.
Well, board, do, do they have to do it if nobody cares? I mean...
I think it looks nicer to have the, have it in an enclosed area.
In an enclosure?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I don't feel like she's asking us if we want to change our view. I think that you were just looking for clarification.
Yes, just clarification.
On what was being designed, and she doesn't have an issue with it.
And where?
So I don't see any reason why we would need to change.
And will, will that enclosure be seen from the street and other neighbors?
From the street, yes.
Yeah, it will? Okay.
Yeah, we would see it, but it gets enclosed.
Let's leave that as designed, and we're taking, you know, a more conservative approach since there's going to be more individuals in the home and it is an accessory apartment. So we'll, we'll leave that as is if you agree.
Yeah, as long, yeah, that's...
Okay. All right. Okay. So that's, that's that item. Was there anything else you thought of?
No.
As far as the surveyor, do we need the surveyor now or not going to treat them?
Well, I just, yeah, that's, that's between you. I, I, I would want a, I would want an answer. I mean...
I mean, that's fine. I just want to know if based on trees that's not...
No, no, we're going to, we're going to omit those.
Mary?
Yeah.
I, I think when they go to do the bill, after this, they do a building permit, correct, Dan?
Yeah.
And then when they go for the building permit, our code enforcement officer wants to see the, the line demonstrated.
Right.
You know, before they start work. So whatever that means, if that means having the surveyor locate that line. Now, if your surveyor already located the line and the owner of the applicant is, doesn't want to dispute it, then the line's already located and they let the code enforcement officer know.
Well, what I can tell you of the survey, the line itself, there's no discrepancy. It's the same distance, same width, you know, so there's no issue on the line.
Yeah.
It was just where the surveyor would be, because our surveyor stopped the trees.
Yeah. I, I think it's important in a case where you have like a tight spot, that, that the line be located before construction starts, just to make sure that the contractor isn't extending his operations into the neighbor.
That's, that's not wrong. I mean, we have, we have to, you know, we'll get the line located.
It sounds like they already located it, so...
Well, we just, we want the original discrepancy between their survey and ours on the lot line. Maybe doesn't ever have to change it. We just use our finished...
Yeah. And honestly, the, the back line, for example, on the survey that was used for the project plan, which was prepared March 31st of 2025, shows 10 foot, 10 inches to the property line from the shed. And then on the, the new survey that the shorts had provided, September 15th, 2025 date, shows 10 foot, 10.3. So they're very close in the back. You know, that's a matter of inches off in the back, you know, according to whatever shot they might have taken on those sheds to, you know. So it seems like the back is probably right. The trees appear to be, on the, the March survey, appear to be about a foot inside the property line, and this is indicating that they're seven or eight feet off into the short property. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy there. That's why I was asking what the diameter was, because...
I doubt, it's the line. I'm sure the line reconciles. It's really the features next to the line that may be off.
Right.
The, the trees.
We don't have any trees anywhere. We never have any intention of touching them anywhere. But if there are a line or not.
And it doesn't appear they're going to be fighting over the property line. So I think we're, we're good at this point. All right? And you, if you choose to sort that out, or it's needed to be sorted out, you can handle that yourselves.
I'm just going to get out our survey.
There you go. That's all. All right? Everybody satisfied?
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to add one thing.
Please. Yeah, you have to go there.
I'm for it.
Oh, all right. Good.
So I'm paying the surveyor for 39 Cunningham Lane. You have to go to this one.
You need to actually talk into that microphone so it can be picked up by the video recorder over there.
Stitch your name, room.
Yeah, Richard Short, 39 Cunningham Lane.
Very good.
So I just wanted to tell you that at the end of our survey, our surveyor, I think it was Jim Sheridan, he had told me that there was nothing wrong with the dimensions that were done by the Veronese surveyor. He said it was just that pictorial sight of those three trees that were imaged wrong on the drawing. He, he told me that everything else looked perfectly fine to him. So I just want to throw that out there.
Oh, yeah. That's exactly what you just said, right?
When you, when you said pictorial, what are you referring to?
Representation.
They just showed it in the wrong spot.
Right.
The drawing or...
He depicted the trees in the wrong place.
The drawings that were proposed, the trees were depicted in the wrong location.
Okay, you didn't use parcel access.
No.
No. That's why they have whiteout. All right. Very good. All right? Very good.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right. So at this point, we're in a position to do what now?
Well, the public hearing's technically still open right now.
Yes. Yep. And everybody is, has, questions have been answered, so I guess we can close the public hearing.
Do you want to ask anyone else?
If the board is, is prepared to do so, I've done that. Yep.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we're in a position to, Dan, consider...
Special use.
The draft resolution. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make one tweak in Dan's resolution if you're going to be considering it, given the fact that the aforementioned abstract, not an abstract, but even the restrictive covenants have been, you know, given, reviewed by me before a building permit is issued. So I'll, if you want, I'll read it as condition seven.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. And are you needing me to read the resolution?
Just read the, the...
Here.
Be further resolved, because it has all the conditions.
That's the conditions. I don't think we have to go through all the history to get to this point necessarily.
The conditions, 1 through 6, and I'm going to add the 7.
Then why don't you add the 7?
Okay.
Actually, it should go at the end, it's be further resolved that prior to issuing some sort of...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We, we can add, what we could do is, we could either have it before the signing of the plan and before the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah.
You want to do it for that?
Yeah.
So that'll give a little more time for them, you're saying? Because he would have to sign the plan first.
He'd have to, and then before the plan is signed.
So that's what the six conditions are before the plan is signed, so why don't we just add it to that?
Exactly.
As number 7.
Right.
Okay. And what would you like me to read to the public?
No, you just, number 7.
Do you want me to give you the language right now?
Please. Please, yeah.
All right. The planning board is a direct applicant to provide the declaration.
Cheryl, I don't know either. Should I write it down, or should he?
He's got it, he's got it.
The planning board is a direct applicant to provide the declaration of restrictive covenants to the planning department for attorney review prior to the signing of the map.
Yeah, which, all of those are prior to the signing of the plan.
Okay.
As a restrictive covenants of subdivision.
Shall we have a vote on it? I'd, I'd like to make a motion to accept number seven as written.
Amendment to the draft resolutions?
Right.
Have a second?
Sucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and just, what I did was, I put a few different options on the whereas clause on the second page, depending on the level of public hearing, public comment. So what I would do is, I would suggest where there were a few public comments received, and having considered the public comments, close the public hearing. And then the other text there can go away.
Yep.
That was just draft, draft text, depending on the situation we had to deal with.
All right, so we're in good shape then. That'll come off.
Yep, I'll handle that.
And we need to do the special use, right?
All right, and then, so, that's, the, the resolution is for the special use, right?
It's site plan and special use, so, you know, we were saying, the conditions are normally the most important things that the applicant's aware of.
Okay.
And that's prior to signing of the plan, so if you'd like, I can just read them in really quick, for the record. Be it further resolved, that foregoing conditions of approval as set forth below shall be fulfilled prior to the signing of the plan by the chairman of the planning board. The applicant shall address the remaining comments with the town, within the town engineer's review letter dated September 17, 2025, and any subsequent comments that may arise as a result of addressing said comments. And two, the building inspector shall verify the bedroom count in the existing house and coordinate with the assessor. And three, the applicant shall submit a letter of consent permitting upon reasonable, reasonable notice to the parcel owner, periodic inspections by the town of Beekman Building Department. And four, the applicant shall obtain Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health approval. And five, any and all outstanding applications and/or ASCRO fees related to the planning board review process shall be remitted as determined by the town finance department. And six, the applicant shall sign a copy of this resolution, file it with the planning board for the purpose of indicating familiarity with the provisions of this resolution and acknowledging receipt of a copy thereof. And seven, is the, is the condition that Craig just read in, I believe it was, the planning board is to direct the applicant to provide the declaration of covenants to the town attorney for review.
Subdivision, declaration?
Uh, declaration of restrictive covenants for the subdivision, is that what it was? Restrictive covenants for the subdivision.
It's referencing the deed.
It's referencing the deed, so there must be a little something.
With a library page, it's written the deed.
So it should be able to, should be able to get that relatively easy.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if we need to, I don't know if we would need to amend the resolution as it's shown, but obviously the trees, if that was decided, that that can come off. That, that can just be something that I look for in my review. I'm sure they're not going to forget to take them off, but.
No, no, and I think that.
I'm a whiteout, I do it.
Yep.
So I don't think we need to do anything different to the resolution for that.
So having heard that, I would like to propose a resolution to grant site plan approval and issue a special use permit to establish, in conformance with the town zoning law.
Very good. Second, please? Second? Or comments, whichever you choose. All right? A vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous?
Thanks.
Um, very good. So at this point, I think we can motion to close the hearing unless anybody else would like to say anything before we do that?
The public hearing?
Oh, we did that already.
Close.
Yeah, we closed it. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time and help on the project.
Congratulations? Nope, thank you. So next on the agenda is Claude Meadows for discussion.
Do you think you could scan that and send it to me, just for understanding that there was a difference?
All right. Hey, Matthew. How are you?
Matt Towne, applicants engineer.
Say, I'm sorry?
Matt Towne, applicants engineer.
Yes, hi.
Introducing myself.
Good evening. Good to see you again. So would you like to lead us in the direction you want us to go in?
Sure, yeah, so if you recall last meeting, we had the public hearing and it was closed. Since then, there was a meeting with the town's representative engineer and attorney, and the applicant's attorney and myself, and we discussed a lot of the legal requirements involved in subdivisions, so that's something that we're working on. Still going through border health stuff, all the septic systems are pretty much good to go. We did well testing last week, one of the wells yielded 30 gallons per minute, so we're in good shape there. Doing the sampling though, um, there were a couple minor comments that were addressed. I've tried to get in touch with the Highway Super, haven't heard back, but I'll be persistent. Um, yeah, and then I provided some responses for the wetland water body and water course protection, water resource permit. But that's, I think that's about it.
I think our biggest challenge tonight is the seeker determination, so the board needs to take a hard look at seeker tonight. There's some that may, are on the fence, and I'll let Dan maybe give you a little preface on that.
Yeah, sure. So this is a type one action. This is a parcel that is located within an established agricultural district, and as a result, the threshold for type one actions is reduced to 25% of that of usual, meaning that in this case, what would normally be 50 lots not served by municipal water and sewer now becomes 12.5. The proposal calls for 13 lots that have no water or sewer, you know, they have onsite septic system and well, and that means that this is a type one action. So the applicant's representatives provided us with a complete part one, full environmental assessment form that has been reviewed in the past. And what we did, and on your, you know, for your benefit, was to at least start a part two and a part three of the full EAF. So it's, it's a rather long document. We, we don't have a whole lot of part, type one actions lately around here, but this is a little bit more lengthy than the usual, you know, short form EAF parts two and three that we, we've done recently. So it's always good to just get a little refresh on these things. So part two identifies a certain number of categories, I believe there's four of them, and they reference certain answers that were provided in the part one of the EAF. So you're, you're always in this position when you're, when you're looking at the part two, of kind of cross referencing back and forth between the part one. And then also, looking at the DEC's website, so I gave you all a link to the DEC's website, which gives a lot of examples of what might be considered no or small impact versus a difference to something that might be a moderate to large impact. And so it's, obviously, it's up to you guys as the, as the lead agency for this type one action, to go through these, but the most appropriate thing you can do is literally go through all the questions. You know, there's a lot of them, so it's a little time consuming, but, you know, it also demonstrates that you've taken a hard look, as is required by law.
And specifically, we get overtime pay whenever we review.
I think time and a half times zero is still zero.
Times is? That's it? Oh, all right.
But we, we thank you for your service.
You're welcome. So I'll, I'll go through them.
Dan, do we want to do that now, or do it in preparation for the next meeting?
Uh, no, I, I mean, this was what the, the whole concept was. The, the public hearing is now being closed.
Yep.
And so the, the clock is on.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're at the, nearing the end of that clock, and they've, they've provided this, and we talked about doing seeker at this meeting at the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's appropriate for the board to go through the seeker at this point.
And the Sunshine Labs would like us to do it.
And another question, was there anything done in part three? Part three looks empty.
So I, I basically just filled out some of the basic stuff in there, but we address, anything that this board feels is a moderate to large impact, we need to address in part three. There were a few identified as potentially moderate to large, and, but I wanted the board's consensus on that, or the board may disagree with me on something where I put no or small, but I just wanted to at least start most of the process and, and get some of the low hanging fruit off for you all to be able to kind of streamline your review of this. But then we have to go through the part three after we identify all the moderate to large impacts. And I'd certainly be able to, you know, give you some input on that from my perspective. Ultimately, it's up to you.
So you want me to start with number one, impact on land?
Sure.
Okay. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Yes. All right, so under A, there's, I'm not going to read the entire sentence, so what I'll do, involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. No impact.
No.
You stop me anytime a board member has a problem or a question, okay? But I'm going to go through these in rapid succession.
It's no or small on that column.
No or small impact, all right? Action may involve construction on slope 15% or greater, no or small impact. Land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground service, that would be surface, construction on that land, no. The proposed action may involve the excavation removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material, no or small impact. Construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, no or small impact. Resultant increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicide, no or small impact. Located with--
All right, can we stop right there?
Okay.
Doesn't that exceed the threshold? If you read the rules, you review the information, you review the applicant, if, if you answer yes to a numbered question, please complete the, if you answer no, check proposed. Where are the directions on what, what constitutes a moderate to large?
Are you having a problem with that?
I think it exceeds the no or small impact, yeah.
The erosion?
Yeah, and it's not a bad thing to say, we're doing disturbance out there, and you get, that gets explained in part three, but, but it may, it, it's not technically correct to say no.
Matthew, would you like to weigh in? Any other board members like to weigh in?
No, I'll defer to Rob, I mean, he's, he's got the expertise in that area.
Okay.
For sure.
All right.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're preparing a SWIP to address potential erosion and physical disturbance and vegetation removal.
I, I used to believe the rules, and I, I'm a little rusty on this, but.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement, we'll defer to you.
Yes.
So, yeah, let me just read a little something from the, from the DEC's website, because again, they, they go through every single one of these, and they give you examples of no or small, and they give you examples of moderate or moderate to large. And it's, you know, every project is different, of course, and, and it, it's also somewhat subjective, and it's also, you have to base it on, you know, the size of the project, the size of the parcel, all these things. So in, in terms of question F, which is construction that occurs over, um, sorry, the proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, they, they deem some potential small impacts would be stormwater discharges will take place, but it will not flow to adjacent properties, and the project minimizes stormwater runoff. Another example of small impact would be the project includes land clearing that disturbs less than one acre of land and does not require a SWIP. That's not the case here. The project includes some paving or construction of other impervious surfaces, but runoff is either controlled in a SWIP or covers a small percentage of the parcel. So that's where I kind of looked at this and said this might be considered small, because it will have paving and construction in other impervious surfaces, but there's a SWIP in place. I don't know if you want to consider that a small percentage of the parcel, the, the, I think the impervious here is a little over two acres, and apparent parcel's 20 something, so it's around 10% total impervious or something on the site. Those are some ways to kind of look at it. And when they say moderate to large impact, examples would be having no SWIP, and stormwater discharges will flow to adjacent properties and negatively impact the property or other natural resources such as wetlands, reservoirs, or streams. Or stormwater will impact an important aquatic habitat for rare endangered or threatened species, or stormwater will prevent the designated best use of a class A, B, or a CT water body, or large areas of vegetation will be removed from the site, large portions of development will occur on steep slopes. So none of those really seem to be very applicable to this project in my review.
So how does, how does the answering of this, moderate to large, impact the project?
Well, what happens is, the board will have to address any one that is checked moderate to large in the part three. And, and to Rob's point, you know, there's always been this, I don't want to call it gray area, we've had this conversation plenty, where, you know, sometimes you can identify something as moderate to large, but you can explain in the part three how they've mitigated it by good design and providing an erosion and sediment control plan that meets the requirements of the New York State Stormwater Design Manual and also the, the Blue Book, the Erosion Sediment Control Book. And you can explain how some, you know, how they avoided steep slopes with their development and where they've been able to maintain a bunch of existing trees by designing around them, as opposed to just taking them out, which would, you know, of course, you take out trees and vegetation, more of a chance of erosion. So those are the things, it's all part of an overall consideration, and it's subjective, so we can all agree, and sometimes we'll all disagree on some things, but.
Is the consideration before or after? Is the consideration before or after the plans?
And, and that, that's that gray area.
Exactly.
I don't think we need to be redundant.
My, my interpretation of it, as I was trained, was you're deciding if it meets the threshold or not, and then you justify it. Sometimes we justify it and say, yeah, it might exceed that threshold, but it really, like Dan was saying, we're not, you know, we're, we have these mitigation measures and this, and then we hit no, but that's, to me, technically not correct. You're supposed to hit yes, and then in the third part, justify why you don't think it'll impact.
Well, you're both engineers. You work for the government.
I can get a lot of trouble.
You work for the government, you both are licensed, duke it out.
No, no, it's never a duke out. Rob and I, I think we're often on the same page with this.
I'm sure you are.
You know, those examples that the DEC website gives me in answering part two, they indicate to me that if there's a SWIP in place, so that is part of the consideration. So I, this is kind of where--
That's fairly new to me, because I, the, the DEC is now providing more tools on how to characterize this.
Right.
And that's happened since I used to prepare seekers, and so if you're telling me the way a DEC is characterizing it, it now fits more like a, no, it doesn't exceed that threshold, then I can concur with that.
Yeah, I, it's robust right now. Their website has an answer for all 18 of the categories in part two, and it goes through every single question and gives examples. Now, again, like I said, every project, you have to take it into the context of that project, the scale of that project.
Yeah. I agree with your interpretation.
It's either way, I'm happy with it, and then we can answer it in part three, or we can, or we can put it no or smalls.
Let's keep going.
They're individual homes.
We can circle back on, on F, all right? We'll, we'll keep going through, I, I got a question mark there.
They're individual homes.
So the next one is, action may, did you want to say something, Pete? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you.
Yeah, they're individual homes.
Right. And they're going to be built individually, right? As they're sold, the lots.
So the impact is going to be no greater--
Yeah.
--than if, if a single, because it is a single on the lot, it's going to be no greater than it would be in any other project.
Right.
So if you're saying, so I'm, I think no is sufficient.
Okay. So the next item, action may be located within coastal erosion hazardous area. Is the ocean anywhere near?
I don't think so.
All right. So then, the, the, the impact on geological features.
That's a whole nother category, so what the part two allows you to do is, if, if there are no, in this case, unique or unusual landforms on the site.
Right.
When you reference the part one, those are all answered as no.
Yep.
So therefore, the answer to this main category is no, and once you do a no to the main category, you don't have to answer any of the sub-questions.
Right.
So I answered the main category as no on this.
Cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves.
Right.
So, action may create a new water body, no. No small impact may occur. No or small impact.
You're on the next one, right? Impacts on surface water, category three.
Yes. May result, number, letter B, increase or decrease of over 10% or more than a 10-acre, increase or decrease in surface area of any body of water. No. No or small impact may occur. Proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from wetlands or water body, no or small impact may occur. Construction, D, construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or in the body of banks of any other water body, no or small impact. Action may create turbidity in the water, either from upland, upland erosion runoff or disturbance, disturbing bottom sediment, no or not, or small. Include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface, no or small impact. H is a moderate to large impact, and H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies.
So the reason that I chose moderate to large on this one was simply because stormwater practices are located right within the buffer of the wetland, and there is a, there is a chance, so, so we can address that in part three if you agree with that, you know.
Yeah, it was brought up by someone in the public as well.
That's right, by Cole Sandy.
You, you actually skipped G, just so you know.
That's not right. Nothing wrong with G. Action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water, no. Action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action, no or small impact. Action may involve application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body, no or small impact. May require the construction of new or ex-- May require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. No. Or small impact. Was somebody wanting to say something?
I have a question about I, Dan. Based on what Colasanti was saying, may affect the water quality of, within or downstream of the proposed site?
It's very similar to H, which, which we, we put as moderate to large, and I think the reason why I looked at I a little bit differently is because the water quality is being treated by several micro-practices along the way in this project. So, there's a number of bio-retention areas and rain gardens, and the, the stormwater ponds that are at the very end, that are closest to the wetlands, are really like a finishing treatment in terms of quantity, but the quality treatment is already being taken care of by a number of micro-practices along the way. So, I, I looked at that as, as less of an opportunity for a large or moderate impact.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
To defer to you guys.
Impact on groundwater. Yes. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or maybe, may have the potential to introduce contaminants or groundwater, or, to groundwater or aquifer. So, for A, may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells.
So, why wouldn't we consider that potentially moderate to large? We're going to put in 13 wells, yeah?
Because everything else is no, Dan.
Yeah, just, just because a main category has yes, does not mean there have to be any that are moderate to large.
That makes no sense.
It just means that you have to answer-
I believe you.
It just means you have to answer every one of the sub-questions to justify your determination.
But to the question, we're putting in new wells. Why wouldn't that be moderate to large?
Right. I can go to the website and see what guidance I might have used for that. So, some examples of projects that may have small impacts would be, the proposed project does not create a need for new water or wastewater. That's not true here. Proposed projects that will connect to an existing public water supply without a capacity, that's not the case here. The intended water supply is a new groundwater well, and there are no known problems within adjacent similar uses using the same groundwater supply. So, I don't recall hearing any issues with capacity from any of the neighbors during the public comment period. And, and just to reinforce that, the Health Department will be requiring one test well for every four lots, right? So, it's, there's going to be either three or four test wells that will be pump-tested for quantity and quality, but-
Yeah, and we did that last week, and there was 30 gallons per minute in one of the wells.
And one of the wells had 30? That's tremendous yield.
Yeah. No, I have no doubt that you can demonstrate to us that it's not going to affect the neighbor's wells, but that doesn't mean that we preclude that decision, that we go ahead and preempt it and say, "We don't think it's going to happen." It's Part III that I think you should be providing for our engineer, who should be presenting to us, or you should be presenting to us the rationale of why you don't think that the new wells will have an effect on, on, on existing water well supplies, you know, and that we need to, this is basically home. The way I look at it is, what would happen if, if we did affect a neighbor's well, and they came to the town and said, "Hey, why weren't you looking out for us?" It's, we need to have it in here saying, "Well," no pun intended, "we had assessed the wells and the, you know, and it was determined through testing that that could not happen."
Yeah, and just to be clear, that's a, that's a permit that the Health Department issues. You know, they, they have, they have the ultimate say on the arrangements of water supply and sewage disposal. It is a seeker issue, though, so.
So, it sounds like that's what needs to be in Part III, that-
We certainly could-
We went to the Department of Health, and they, they certified that they can get the right amount of water supply for the existing wells without impacting-
The Health Department will not grant the permit until we're done with seeker, though.
Right.
So, there's a cart before the horse, isn't there?
But we're doing testing for the, the Health Department, and so we can draw on the testing that's being done.
Right.
It's all over five. I just, I only heard about the one that was 30, but.
Do you, did you test the neighbor's wells or any of the neighbor's wells?
No, that's not required. It's just, there's three test wells on the property that the Health Department requires.
And so, when you test, when you're pumping one of them, you ask, you have to look at the other ones to see if they're drawing down or not? Is that how we know we're not going to affect them?
No, it's a, this is just for an individual well. You would just do a stabilized drawdown test for the well you're pumping.
All right. So, let me go back to the original question. How do I know this is not a small, or, I, I keep wanting to be your shepherding of your application, but I feel like you need to be the shepherd of your application. How do I know you're not creating additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells? You're, you're creating 13 new wells.
Right. Yeah, and, I mean, I think that they, that it's 23 acres, so I think there's sufficient recharge on that amount of property for absorption into the, into the ground of what's going to be drawn out. That's why there's three wells being tested on the site. The Health Department ensures that there is adequate water, and, you know, that's what we're going through.
Yeah, Rob's question is, what is the effect on the neighbors? Where does the, what does the water overlay, aquifer overlay show for that area?
Yeah, we're, we're in the aquifer overlay here.
Excuse me?
We, we are in the aquifer area here.
We're, lots of water.
Within the aquifer overlay.
So, there's water under it.
Okay, so-
You may have to go deep to get it. You may have to go deep to get it. I got one-
Right, but that's a, that's an indication of, that's an indication that there should not be a large impact, but there's no guarantee, because like you said, it has to go with the depth of the, of the well.
Right. How deep are your wells?
200 feet was the 30 gallon per minute.
And yield 30 to low?
It was pretty much ideal.
Okay, yeah, no, I know.
It's very high.
I have a well that's 100 gallons a minute.
Wow.
Want to buy some water?
Yeah.
And there's no knowing the source of diminished flow. I mean, a neighbor could have a tremendous amount of manganese and magnesium and iron in their well, and that could be the cause of the reduced flow in their well. So, you know, just because other homes are tapping into it, doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to affect the neighbors, in my opinion.
I'm just, I'm scouring around the property right now on parcel access, and some of them have well completion reports, and there is a well completion report on parcel 799688. That's one Clifford Schwark's property.
Who's that?
Clifford.
Why are we worried about that?
And his yell, his, his well is, was tested when it was drilled by, probably by a regular air, air test at 40 gallons a minute.
That's good.
Yes, tremendous yield.
He's greedy. I think he should share some of his water with any neighbor that has diminished flow, all right?
It's swamp water.
Yeah.
Well, I just think that we're adding 13 wells in the neighborhood, and there's no way we can answer that question with no or small impact.
Right, right.
I'm not doubting that it can be demonstrated that in Part III, or described in Part III, why that won't be an impact, but I, I think it's, it would exceed the threshold of, of that item and should be-
I would attend to agree with Rob. I think it should be moderate to large and answered in number three.
Okay. That's two. Is there another, what, is, do any other board members here? All right, Jason, Fay?
No.
I'm-
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. Yeah, I'm not.
I defer to Rob, and he's been-
Okay, so that would be three, all right? So-
And basically, all we're saying is it may occur.
Right.
Okay. And then in the third, the three, I just want a justification of why we don't think it will.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to change A to moderate to large, or am I on the wrong one?
Yeah.
Yeah, A to moderate to large, okay. Demand from proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supply or aquifer. Are you now changing that one to?
That seems very similar to the question before.
Yeah.
So, I would, yeah, I mean, I would change that one as well. I don't think, I don't see how we can not call it moderate. And, and listen, if we were just talking about one or two lots, I might just say, "Yeah, it's only one or two lo, it's only one or two wells." We're talking 13 wells in a neighborhood.
Okay. May allow or result in residential use in areas without water and sewer services. Action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services.
Without central.
Oh, yeah? Okay. All right, so that's no or small impact. I have, I can't comprehend that sentence. So, is everybody else, anybody else having a problem with that sentence, or is it just-
It's confusing.
Oh, yeah?
Well, it's basically saying that, it's saying that residential use is in area that, basically, that does not have a central water and sewer system.
I think it's a bad sentence.
No kidding.
So, what are we doing on that? Leaving it?
No.
I think it's okay, no, because it's-
They get an F, all right, on that one. The proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater.
No.
No. The proposed act, that's a dumb question. The, the proposed action may result in construct, in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or is suspected to be contaminated. No. The proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products. No. The product may, the, the proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within 100 feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources. No. I say we put a ban on pesto, pesto, pesticides and, and herbicides in our town. So, the next major category, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. No.
No.
So, it's not within a flood plain or anything, and that was just all identified in the Part I, so you just move on to the next category, then, number six.
Unless the pond all of a sudden turns into a geyser. That's possible. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. That's no.
These are all no.
All right. Impact on plants and animals. Flora or fauna or flora, all right? Loss of fauna or flora. Yes.
Did any-
There's no endangered species there.
Did that show up?
There were endangered species listed. It was Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, and then there was also the swamp birch.
Swamp birch?
Mm-hmm. So, in June, Matt's office had mentioned that they had a wetland biologist go out and identify that the, that there was no swamp birch, if I remember right, that-
Yeah.
That were identified on the site. And there is limited potential for Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat. As you know, the site is mostly clear.
Right.
There are a number of trees that are there, though, that could potentially be habitat. So, again, this is one of those things where I, if I look at that site, I would say 90-plus percent of it is open field, which is not Indiana bat or northern long-eared bat habitat.
Right. And that's why you put no or small impact on loss of life?
So, that's why I decided to go with-
Yeah, of any of those creatures. All right.
And we have a tree clearing note on the sheet, too, just to limit the timeframe.
Yeah, it's just, so even just to, to further potentially protect it, they're doing tree clearing in the times when the bats are in their hard binoculars, so.
See, again, that's the reason why you put it in, that's why we, I've always bring it up. So, there's the potential for a bat, because there's the tree there, and there's, and it's been flagged by the state that there's potential for Indiana bat there. But then in Part III, we say, while the state indicated there's a potential for that-
They're not there.
Where we, 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 there's no way we could possibly disrupt it, because we're not going to be cutting down any trees during that, that year, and it just gets explained. But I'm okay either way. I don't feel strongly.
Yeah, I think it, you know, this is one of those ones where if they had 23 acres and it was completely wooded, and they were going to clear 18 acres, I would probably go moderate to large. But that's just me. That's the way I look at the scale and the context, which is, which is, the, part of the instructions of Part II is that you have to look at the scale and context of the project and the subject property, so.
No, that's a good point.
So, what are we doing?
No.
Move on. Reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation needed. New York State, federal, found on or near. No. Proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species or special concern and conservation need as listed, New York State, federal government. No. Diminish the capacity of registered national natural landmark to support biological community, established techno. Removal of or ground disturbance in any portion designated significant natural community. No. Interference with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for predominant species that occupy or use the project site. No. Action required, acquires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regional or locally important habitat. No. In commercial, industrial, recreational projects, use of herbicide or pesticide. No. All right, impact on agricultural resources. Moderate to large impact on soil classified within soil group 1 through 4 of New York State Land Classification System.
So, what I did on that is I went to Part I E A F and identified that all 20-some-odd acres of the site had soils that were, you know, prime farmland and whatnot. So, so that's why I clicked that as moderate to large.
Yeah, that's a shame.
May serve, cross, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. No. Result in excavation or compaction of soil profile, active agricultural land. No.
Is it active agricultural land?
It's being hayed.
I think it's hayed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's still being hayed. It was being hayed. Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it is.
Unless, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, because, yeah, there's a lot of, yeah. May irreversibly convert agricultural land to non, yes.
I agree.
So, I went with moderate to smart, moderate to large on that, because there's going to be houses and roads here-
Yeah.
-where there were fields before, so.
Yeah. May disrupt or prevent installation of agricultural land management system. No. May result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. No. Not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan. No. Impact on aesthetic resources. New category. Yes. Visible from any officially- Visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource? No.
This is not on, this road isn't on our scenic.
No.
No, the reason that it was clicked to yes on the major category is because it's within five miles of the Appalachian Trail.
This is one of the most beautiful areas in our town.
Our roads are designated, we have scenic roads designated somewhere, right?
We do have certain scenic roads and scenic view sheds of our own.
But this isn't one of them?
No. I think Pleasant Ridge Road is one.
Okay.
I believe.
Result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views? May be visibly, may be visible from public accessible vantage points seasonally screened by summer foliage but visible during other seasons year-round? No or small impact to either question? Activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action? Routine travel by residents, travel to and from work, or tourism-based activities? Recreational? No and no. Small impact? May cause diminishment of the public employment enjoyment and appreciation of designated aesthetic resource?
You know, Dan, based on the input.
Is that a no or a yes?
Based on the input from the.
Which one? E?
Yeah.
Neighbors at the public meeting? I think that we should answer yes and then address that in part three.
Okay.
For letter E?
Yes. I agree with Peter, but Rob has not.
No, I, I, I agree. Peter's right.
You agree with Peter?
Yeah, he's spot on. The community came up and that's the one thing they were saying is that it used to be a farm.
Yep.
And we see it from our property and now it's going to be a bunch of houses.
I think maybe the better one for that then would maybe be D. The D, which is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. And the reason I'm saying that is because E is specific to diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of a designated aesthetic resource.
Which is not designated.
Which is not a designated aesthetic resource.
Well, one neighbor also liked to hunt. You're not going to be able to do that now.
Well, he couldn't very well hunt there anyway. It's within 500 feet of living quarters.
Well, I think D will achieve our goal.
Do you want to? I think we can.
Yeah, use D.
D, D at least, DI, which was the routine travel by residents, including travel to and from. Sure.
All right.
So. I mean, also, it's viewed from publicly accessible vantage points.
All right. So the next category, impact on historic and archaeological resources? No. So we can skip to impact, new section, number 11, on open space and recreation? No. So we skip to impact on critical environment area? That's number 12? No. Skip to impact on transportation? No. 14, impact on energy? Yes. Really? Proposed action will require new or upgraded or an upgrade to existing substation? Creation or extension of energy transmission or supply systems serve more than 50 single or two-family residents? No. May utilize more than 2,500 megawatts per hour per year of electricity? No. Involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet building area where completed? No. Another, another conflict. So what am I doing?
No, the reason it was checked yes is because the question in the EAF part one said, will it create a demand for energy? Which, yes, every house needs energy.
Not a big impact.
Yeah, but, but then when you get into the context and scale of it and go through these questions, you realize that it's a no or small impact.
Forgive us, everyone, because we don't get many part two seeker determinations.
We're almost done.
Impact on noise, odor, and light? Yes. All right, so produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations? No.
We, for our seekers in the county, we typically answer yes to that because when they go to construct the operation, they're using.
But you live in a county, you're working in a county.
That's west, isn't it?
You're working in a county.
Sometimes it's in Solmers, sometimes it's on Hilltop Hanover Farm, it's on, it's on, it's, that doesn't bear because.
Oh, we're in Dutch.
I'm not talking about Down Fern and our Yonkers, but even if I was, the, the point, all right, let's, again, I'm going to put it in a way that we all understand it. Is any of our neighbors going to complain when excavators come out?
Yeah, but that's.
They potentially start to work at 6:00 in the morning?
But that's only temporary.
We're saying no. We're saying that you're not going to have a noise issue.
I don't, but I, I'm viewing it more if somebody's going to put a disco, you know, there. And it's going to be an outdoor disco with a, with a ball, all right? And speakers, okay?
If that's the way you're thinking about it, then yes, we would say no to that. But I'm saying yes because we're not putting a disco, we're putting, we're building houses and you're using sometimes a.
So let me, let me just say what the DEC's, two examples of a small impact would be if the project produces noise but those levels are below regulated levels. That's not necessarily related to the project. But if the project produces noises but those levels are below or even above regulated levels and they are temporary and will only occur during a short-term construction phase, that's a small impact according to DEC.
Which is how we justify it in part three.
Right, and that's good.
That's how I, we describe it in part three.
Right, so what, what they're saying is you answer part two, small impact.
Because it's, because it's temporary.
Either way.
All right, that's fine.
So what, what's your pleasure there?
Small.
Okay. So.
Robert? Remember that next time you use a hammer.
We're done.
We're done.
I think so.
No. I'm not allowed with the hammer.
Well, there's, there's also blasting within 1,500 feet? No. Routine odors for more than one hour per day?
Only if you have donkeys.
Just want to support a body.
Or a flagellins problem, yeah. That could, that could do it, too.
And the rest are all no.
Result in light shining into adjoining properties? No.
That's a new one.
Light creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions? No. All right? And then impact on human health? No. Consistency with community plans? No. Consistency with community character? No. And that would be, that was fun. Thank you.
And just, just so, that sounds bad, what you're saying, but consistency with community plans, they say, the, the description is the proposed action is not consistent with adopted head use plans. So that's why it's no.
Okay, fine.
And then consistency with community character, it's the same thing. It says the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character? No, it's consistent with community character. So that's why that gets no.
At minimum, I insist I get another pumpkin peanut butter Reese's candy.
So with that said, I tracked 3H.
Yes.
4A, 4B.
Yep.
8A, 8D, and then 9D. Ah. Okay.
Ethel's never had candy.
All right, we're all getting tired apparently. We need to finish up part three here. We need, we need to provide the answers to part three.
I thought, I thought maybe you guys were going to provide the rationale. We could talk about it next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, well.
Do you want to talk about it now? That's fine, I'm here. I'm okay with that.
I mean, it's all on our mind right now and.
All right.
And technically, we're on the clock here.
Okay.
Go ahead, let's get it done.
Cheryl's here, we're all here.
That'll be up after your next town board meetings, uh, planning board meeting on the 16th.
It will have been exceeded. Is that what you're saying?
No, you'll have a, you'll have that a week after that, but 62 days to be up, so you should just take that as considered.
Okay. All right. So let's do it.
3H is the first one?
Yep.
So again, the lead agency, which is you guys, you're charged with answering this. So sometimes you can ask the applicant for more information to help you answer it. But the, but the directions are basically to address all the things that were identified as moderate or small, I mean, on moderate or large potential impact.
All right.
So for 3H, sorry, I'm just going to go back to it.
Yeah, but I don't have 3H.
3H was one of the impacts on surface water. And it said the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. So again, the reason that was checked as a moderate to large impact was because it's right within the buffer where some of those stormwater management basins are. But that basin is being designed in accordance with New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual, which provides a pretty decent amount of protections with regard to making sure you have enough freeboard in your pond so that the water level doesn't get too high and then blow out.
Freeboard?
Yeah, freeboard is, freeboard is basically when you have, say, a 100-year flow in your design.
Okay.
And then it still gives more available depth within the pond before it would over top.
Interesting.
And what that does is it creates a stronger berm section, really. So you have much less of a chance of a berm blowing out. The Stormwater Design Manual also provides, you know, protections for pipes leaving your, you know, coming out of your basins and, you know, anti-seep collars and things like that. So based on the fact that the ponds are being designed within accordance within the Stormwater Design Manual, I feel like they're mitigating that potentially, you know, moderate to potentially large impact.
Okay.
That's the long-term measure. I think you might want to add they're going to be using soil erosion controls during construction to prevent stormwater.
Well, that's short-term, that doesn't.
Stormwater discharge. Stormwater can, short, short-term counts, too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You want to address the short-term and long-term?
Silt fencing?
Well, whatever your erosion, is that what you're using for erosion control measures?
Some of it, yeah. There's lots of silt fencing.
So I, I, I think it, I think it's, it's worth including that there's short temporary measures to control erosion, which are the silt fence and then the, the long-term measures, permanent measures that you were talking about, bio retention. The, the stormwater practice is in concurrence with New York State DEC.
Right, and I'll add that the erosion semi-control that they're proposing has all been done by, in accordance with the New York State specification, so. So again, that, there's some, a lot of backup in, in that, so I appreciate you adding that, Rob.
Yeah. And we're fairly certain through the grading plan that we're preventing any runoff from going off-site to address Colasanti's concerns?
Yeah, yeah, they've, they've got a lot of micro-practices and they've got a lot of, you know, ways to handle the stormwater on-site and I feel very good about it. They've done a good job with that.
He's into cement, so we need to make sure.
Yeah. You're into cement.
Yep.
I'll give you some.
I can relate.
So 4A and 4B were impacts on groundwater and they're really intertwined. 4A, proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. And B was water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supplier aquifer. You know, in this case, I would say that the Health Department has protocols in place in order to make sure that they go through certain design characteristics and procedures to make sure that the wells that are drilled are of adequate supply. And, and then based on some of those well completion reports, I found three of them while I was just messing around here. One was 40 gallons a minute on a neighboring property, one was 10 gallons a minute on a neighboring property, and one was 5 gallons a minute on a neighboring property. And five is still good, though. Five is still very good for a single-family home.
Okay.
So.
As long as everybody doesn't shower at the same time?
No, no, it's not.
All the dishwashers on?
Nope, because you're, you know, normally you have storage in your pressure tank.
Okay.
So, yep, 5 gallons a minute is, the, the Health Department gets concerned when you fall below 2 gallons a minute in a way.
Wow, in a single family.
Yeah.
So what is it per person? What is the calculation per person? How many gallons per minute?
Uh, there's, there's no such thing. Well, it's based on your, so if you have a showerhead, it could be a, you know, all the, all the newer fixtures, all the newer fixtures are limited now, you know?
That's why you, yeah.
You used to be able to get blasted by a shower and now you, new fixtures, you can't.
You spend more time showering.
But I think you need to add the existing testing results?
Yeah.
And just say that the wells, wells were tested at the site and they maintained a certain 30 gallon per minute at most and then, and that gives us the indication that we won't detrimentally affect the water supply?
You think you could send those to me, Matt?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Were there any others, Danny?
8A.
Well, what, what's 8A?
8A, let's see, I got to get back to it again, so there's a lot here. Is one of the impacts on agricultural resources. So 8A and 8D are both related to agricultural resources. So 8A was the proposed action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State land classification system. And that is basically unavoidable on this site because every single bit of this site is within that land class. So, I mean, our zoning does allow for this type of use in this, on this property. Now, they, they have 13 lots on 23 acres, so, I mean, you're looking at an average of, you know, based on the land, obviously you have to take out some of that infrastructure for the ponds and the, and the roads, but, you know, you're, you're averaging acre and a half, two acres per lot, almost. And that said, you have a few thousand square feet on each lot that's actually being disturbed of the soil, so I think that can be a justification for this particular category.
Overall disturbance is very low.
Yeah, they, they've managed to keep a lot of the disturbance relatively close. Now, for 8D, that's the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than two and a half acres located in an ag district, which was our case, or more than 10 if not within. So.
What would have to be addressed?
I mean, well, so for this, one of the things that's part of the project here is soil restoration. So after a house is built, what's going to happen is, is that area that typically has heavy machinery and equipment and storage, while the house is being constructed, you go through some, either some deep earth decompaction or ripping to, to kind of rejuvenate that soil so that it doesn't stay in a compacted phase. So that's been incorporated into this project, so I think.
But what does it have to do with agriculture?
Well, it has to do with, you know, maintaining some of those agricultural soils.
Oh.
So, you know, not, I'm not thinking that you're going to end up having houses torn down to go back to fields at some point, but there is still an ability to rejuvenate some of those soils by the soil restoration techniques that are provided in the plan.
Good show.
I wouldn't know how else to answer that.
Yeah.
That's the best I got, Rob.
I think, I think the best we can do, yeah.
You should.
I mean, it's, again, it's, it's like you look at the property and it's, you know, it's zoned for something, it's 20-some-odd acres.
Yeah.
and it's, you know, it's zoned for something, it's twenty-some-odd acres, but all the soils are listed.
Can we say, you know, the lot, the building coverage, you know, is less than twenty-five percent of the entire parcel?
Right.
For sure, it is. It's probably more like eight percent or so.
Right, maybe throw that statistic in there, and then say we're maintaining, you know, the project is maintaining eighty-eight percent or whatever, and still open, so...
That's a good point.
Which can revert, potentially revert in the future back to ag.
Do you have your bulk table handy at all? I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, well, I saw the, I mean, impervious is two-point-three.
Impervious is two-point-three?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So, that's eighty, ninety-seven percent remaining in soil.
I think that's a good justification.
Yeah.
Satisfied with that?
Yes.
That's good.
All right, so 9DI is the last one, and that was our impact on aesthetic resources. So, this was the one where the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action. And we said that was by routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work.
Didn't we mitigate some of that by landscaping the trees that we're doing?
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
We had street trees added to the plan. Did we have any street trees that were being placed? Let's see, I mean, I guess along, along Hines?
And I think there is some.
There's a couple on Hines, and then you had them worn to the proposed road, I believe, right?
Yeah, they're mostly on the proposed road, but a couple near Hines.
Is that stormwater pond, is that landscaped as well? I don't remember right now at the moment.
We were gonna do like a wetland planting mix.
Okay.
We're also introducing some new species of human beings to the area. And some people might think that that's attractive, some may not. There are animals, too.
It's actually only on Hines.
Right?
Depends on what they do in there.
So, you can write that right in.
I might as well have.
I think that's a good point. We're mitigating the effect by planting trees.
Right, I mean, that's, that's really, what more can you do, Rob?
Well, especially considering the fact that, for the majority of this site is not vegetated right now.
Right.
By trees, by trees.
Right.
Yeah, and we're preserving a significant number of trees.
Oh, right, and you're preserving, there's, the stormwater and the wetlands, we're protecting a portion of the site, you know, and that protects that visual to that.
Right.
Okay, so then, based on that, it sounds like the board and the, acting as the lead agency here, that you, you have some feeling that the applicant has provided mitigation measures to some of the moderate to large impacts associated with the project. Therefore, I would, I would suggest then that you could consider B, which, let's see, A says, "This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued." That's actually A, I'm sorry.
B is, although the project could have significant adverse impact on the environment, that impact will be avoided or substantially mitigated because of the following conditions which will require by the lead agency.
I would do B.
And then it says, "There will therefore be no significant adverse impacts from the project as conditioned, and therefore, the condition negative declaration is issued." So, condition negative declarations...
Because there is not one or any major.
Okay, I will make...
Do you want to comment on that at all? I mean, condition neg-dec is not the typical practice, but I can, I can try to look up if you give me a second. Because the CND isn't always the typical. I think most of the time, you just go right straight to a negative declaration.
Yeah, I think A is, I was supposed to say...
You think A is appropriate?
Yeah, I think we've arrived at A by the time we finish, by the time we've explained it in three.
Right.
In which case?
B means you have to have further conditions.
Right, that we'd have to ask for more conditions.
Yeah.
And I think that what we're saying is that the conditions have already been incorporated in by, by proper design.
Yeah, in which case, I will make a motion, "This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment."
Thank you.
And therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, the negative declaration is issued. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I've been to three CE's on this.
That was a hard look.
An hour and a half to two hours each, and lawyers don't even understand. They outwardly say, "We don't get this."
Well, that's...
Can you imagine what start gale is gonna be like? If I get there?
It's because it's not meant to be set in stone, it's meant for us to think about, to think about these issues, and that should have a positive impact on the design.
And we did. And we did. And we really answered the questions that the public asked.
We took such a hard look, I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda. Where are we at now?
Samantha, right?
Okay.
No, actually, we're not, we're not... So, one of the other suggestions was that if a seeker determination was made, in this case, it was a neg-dec, which would be the only appropriate thing that would allow the board, you could consider granting preliminary subdivision approval that'll allow him to go to the outside agencies, get full approvals there, and come back to us with final.
In which case?
And, and the engineer's done a great job, to be honest with you, with the plans and everything. The word docs are great, so...
In which case, I would like to offer, what is this? A preliminary subdivision approval this evening.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you for the hard work.
It was a pleasure working with you. Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is Samantha Estates.
That's what I was...
Oh, God.
Believe me, you sound like you.
Hi.
Not to worry.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
All right, let's jump right in, so...
Okay, so, we were last in front of the board last month, and among that discussion was, the board reauthorized Dan to draft a resolution for conditional approval. We received his draft and his latest comments, and also at the last meeting, we discussed putting together a cost estimate for bonds, which we provided in our latest submission. So, we're just here tonight to move further with the procedure in the conditional approval and get the board's guidance on how you'd like me to proceed with the bonds.
Dan, any questions, problems, or comments for us?
No, I mean, this is, it's a very long resolution, but we had to capture the process that got us to here today. And so, I tried to really encapsulate all those things that have gotten us to this point. And then, I tried to make sure that the discussions that have been had, particularly in the last three meetings, with regard to how we're gonna handle the landscape mitigation and the phasing and all that, so we've, we've placed some pretty specific conditions within the resolution. And that, that, again, to me, is always one of the biggest things to highlight during the course of looking at a resolution of potential, you know, conditional approval. So, we have a series of conditions that we've placed in here.
This is eight pages long.
Yes, I apologize.
This is the longest resolution we've ever had.
Yeah, but, but we had to...
If it needs to be read.
We had to be detailed.
Cluttering it, not me.
We had to be, yeah, we had to be thorough on this. So, the first set of conditions is prior to the signing of the plat, and for that, we have listed those thirteen conditions that we had listed there. Then there is a further condition, which is prior to filing of the plat with the county clerk's office. There's the one condition there about posting performance bonds and letters of credit and all that. Then, there is a set of conditions that are prior to the issuance of a building permit for house construction on any lot within the subdivision. So, before building permit for house construction on any of the five proposed lots, they have to go through and address those six issues that we have, or six conditions. Finally, we added yet another condition, which was prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for house construction on any lot. And that's where we tried to really get into the minutia of dealing with the landscaping while house construction's going on. So, the Phase 1 landscaping and the stormwater, all would have to get done before any building permits are done. That's part of the conditions in the previous set of conditions. And the reason for that is because you can't necessarily do all the plantings where there's gonna be all this construction activity because those plants will probably die. So, we, we trying to segregate all the Phase 1 landscaping that's been delineated on the plans to make sure that that has a good chance for survivability, and then they get into the house construction after that. We also, in that same final condition, tried to capture the concept of what if a house is ready for CVO, as typical might happen in, say, January, when you might not be prime time for planting trees and shrubs? And, you know, the town has a grading, hang, and seeding bond that allows the building inspector to issue TCOs, Temporary Certificate of Occupancies, for houses that are constructed and ready to be moved into in a time when you can't establish grass. And then, that bond is later released after. What I thought we could do is, we could incorporate trees and shrubs that would be required as part of that, into that same bonding process, which would allow them to have temporary CVOs for a house until they can get the planting in the prime season. So, assuming that that would normally happen in the, in the middle of the winter, it could, in theory, happen in the massive heat of July, and somebody doesn't want to do the plantings just then, which is not a prime time, then, you know, it would just go to that next prime planting season. And that was, that was our attempt to capture what I heard from you, but also heard from the applicant and their concerns with temporary CVOs for the houses, so...
That's amazing. We're talking about five houses. These are five houses.
Nice work, Dan. I would like to dub this the Kohler Condition. The Kohler Condition.
The what?
The Kohler Condition.
The Kohler, yeah, I mean, so, I'd like to move forward.
I would like to make motion to grant conditional subdivision plat approval.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I compliment you on your efforts.
Thank you.
Then, everyone has been really cooperative and understanding. It's been a pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only question that I have is, for the bond, do you need representative from, or applicant or representative to attend a town board meeting?
That may be the case.
Okay.
It wouldn't hurt you.
What was the question, just for my own identification?
Once the bond is established and the town board has to accept it.
Right.
So, town board will have to have an action on that. And what she's asking is whether or not they should have representation at that meeting, which, you know, in the recent temperature of the meetings there, I would suggest yes.
Okay, so, just procedure-wise, we're being, are we being referred to the town board?
Well, what, we'll, we'll work through all those numbers and make sure that the numbers are all prepared. I think what we had was that the cross estimate would have to be approved by my office, and then the form of the bond would have to be approved by Craig's office.
Okay.
And then, we'll, we'll suggest to the town board at that point that it be ready to be bonded. So, that would be one of those conditions in here that would have to be done. I think the bonding was before the plat is filed.
Yes.
So, you have to handle, address the other thirteen conditions before the chairman will sign the plat.
Yes, understood, yes.
So, the attorney would have to also draft a maintenance bond agreement.
Okay.
All right, with that maintenance bond, in a format, form and content that's satisfactory to the town attorney.
Okay.
And at that point, at the meeting, at the town board meeting, would be probably best to be brought yourself, you know, on behalf of the applicant, because by then, you would have had a lot of conversations with Dan.
All right.
About that.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, how are you? Next on the agenda is Green Hill Farms subdivision. My packet is missing the comment letter. Anybody else?
Here.
I have, I'm good here.
No, you got it?
I got it. So, Dan, would you like, actually, Mr. Martin, would you like to...
Good evening. I believe at the last meeting, the planning board authorized the town professionals to prepare a resolution of final approval. I have a copy of it, I have a draft of it. I don't know if that was authored, and you know, I received it yesterday, but I'm good here to do whatever's necessary.
Daniel, anything that you want to discuss about this draft resolution?
I hope, hope you've had a chance to at least take a quick look at it, and again, focus on the conditions.
Well, why don't we just focus on those, because we did go over it last, last meeting, right? The first draft, but then...
Um, no, we did not have a first draft at the last meeting, but what I tried, again, I...
What was the confusion last?
I go through all of my meeting notes, and I try to capture everything in terms of the process to get you to this point, and then I try to capture all the things that might be outstanding and left to, to be addressed, and if there were concerns or anything from the, the planning board members, I try to...
How did we leave it off, though? Because there was some confusion where the resolution before the, what? We had to have this done before we do what?
No, I think, I think it might have been that we are looking to get at least a draft of the restrictive covenant for Lot 1.
Okay.
I think it was more about figuring out the mechanism that was gonna be used in order to prevent further subdivision of Lot 1. That's the larger lot on this project, and that was kind of the, there was some questions and talk going back and forth, but I think by the end of that meeting, we had talked about having that restrictive covenant in there.
Okay.
And then, since then, the applicants provided that, so that's what's been incorporated into this resolution, is, you know, making sure that that restrictive covenant is finalized to the satisfaction of the town attorney and...
Do you want to talk about the divider on the driveway?
Yeah, sure, so, thanks, Jason. I have a series of conditions on this particular resolution as well. The first set of conditions is prior to the signing of the plat, which that has the eleven conditions noted. And then, we have prior to filing of the plat at the county clerk. And that's where, before the plat is final, filed, I would like to propose that the applicant shall install the split rail fence on the driveway connection between Lots 1 and 7, as shown on the filed plans, to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And the reason I did that is because once that plat is filed with county clerk, those lots can be sold. And if you still have that driveway connection, what's, what's the mechanism at that point, being that there are houses that don't have building permits that are gonna be issued, to make sure that that split rail fence got put in there to kind of, to differentiate those two properties? So, that, that was the intent of, of why we put it in there between, before filing of the plat. And then, there's another series of, of conditions, there's the prior to the issuance of building permit for house construction on any lot. There's a few things that have to be done by the applicant there, that's, you know, obtaining your Speedy's general permit coverage, providing the town with copies of the filed map and proof of filing of all associated legal documents, and then final individual driveway permits from the town of Beekman Highway Department. And, and then, we had a special condition associated with the issuance of a building permit for a house on the construction for Lot 2. And that had to do with an advanced... And that had to do with an advanced warning sign that was discussed with the highway department. There's a driveway that is, I don't know, five feet short or so of meeting the normal sight line. Very marginal, but in the discussions that the applicant had with the highway superintendent, they talked about putting an advanced warning driveway sign. And I didn't feel like it was appropriate to have that done anytime before the issuance of the building permit because then it's an advanced warning sign for a driveway that might not be there for, I don't know how long.
Right.
And people get numb to signs when they realize that there's no actual driveway to worry about. So I thought it was appropriate to make that a condition of the issuance of a building permit. So that's, that's where I left it. And then the final condition was related to, uh, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for house construction on lots three, four, and five. Lots three, four, and five had the proposed trees. So those are the trees along Beach Road. And the board went back and forth a little bit last month about whether or not those trees should be put in early or during the construction of the house or maybe after the construction of the house. You know, and looking at where the locations of those proposed trees were shown, there's a couple that are like very close to the proposed driveway. So if we have them put those trees in any earlier, they're going to be damaging that root system possibly when they're constructing that, that driveway. So I think it's appropriate to make sure that those trees, you know, to, to give them the best chance for survivability is that we have it as part of a condition of, of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for that. And I'll have to make sure that the, you know, that the building inspector is very well aware of all these specific conditions associated with any of these lots.
Yeah, I was going to say that because the, leaving it up, at that point, the developer may have engaged a buyer. And we're agreeing on this now and the applicant's agreeing on it. So I want to just make sure that it doesn't come back to us in a venue. It's agreed on. It's, after they buy their lot, that's up to them what they want to do. But in order for them to get the certificate of occupancy, they don't need to come back to the planning board to discuss these measures. It's already been agreed upon and they need to handle that in code enforcement.
Right. And, you know, honestly, Ernie, if, what would be helpful, it might be helpful if just even adding a note on there that, you know, those trees are subject to, you know, some sort of verification by the building inspector prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So that way it's on the map as well.
Yeah.
And that just would help maybe trigger a thought on like, hey, why, why was that done? And then it'll help kind of enforce that regulation that you're trying to, to impose here.
But we don't want to get into a discussion about replacement of the trees.
We already did.
We already did that.
It's already shown on the drawing.
If I could interject, I think, I think you meant the lot numbers to be four, five, and six.
Well, that would be a great catch. I'd appreciate that if I got that wrong. So if, if you're telling me it's four, five, six, I believe you. Yeah, that makes sense, right? Because two, three, yeah. Okay, so that would be an amendment.
I make a motion to amend the lots, which one are we?
The condition.
The condition.
Related to the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Ernie, you get a gold star. That's never happened before.
I'll make that motion.
Just so you know.
That's good.
Ever.
You got a second?
What's that?
I made the exception.
I'm finding a mistake on something that you've done.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
You're not perfect.
I'm, I'm not.
My God.
To change the plans for each lot to lots number four, five, and six instead of three, four, and five. That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Double second, all right.
All in favor?
Aye. That also never happened. Double second.
And just, just a clarify. Any other questions?
Just a clarification on, on condition 11. Is it my understanding that the, the owner has to sign each of the sheets of the subdivision plan set?
Yeah, I believe so.
I mean, normally we do the first sheet and of course, they're all tied together.
Historically, we do that because we want the owner to not come back to us someday and say, I didn't know about this.
Right.
You signed it, so that's, yeah.
So the note we have on sheet one, we'll put that, the owner's certification, we'll put that on all the remaining five sheets.
Yeah, please.
All right, that is new.
I guess I will make a motion to grant conditional subdivision plat approval on the Green Hill subdivision.
Can I have a second? Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So on behalf of my client, I thank the board and the towns professionals.
Pleasure. You've been wonderful.
This is always a good point in progress.
Good work in with you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie. So at this point now, on the agenda, we have the Garrido two-family site plan, special use under discussion and myself and Fay Garrido need to recuse ourselves, yes, from this. Okay. And I'll take over. Chairman Rob LaPaine, the helmet's yours.
I, I also just thought I would mention, you know, obviously I have a, a good working relationship, I think, with the board. But if anybody that is remaining of the, the quorum that's remaining here now feels like I couldn't do a fair and impartial review of the project, feel free. And I, I would, I would be happy to recuse myself as well. I did do a first review based on all of the typical standards associated with a project submittal of this level. And, you know, I'll welcome your input and thoughts on that.
Okay.
Stay on.
All right, you could go. Why don't you give us a summary of the project?
Okay, so my name is Joe Farazza. I represent Fay Garrido and West S. Modular Homes. The project is a two-family home in a TC zone. And we've got the plans here. We've got the site plan. It should be in front of you, so you can ask me any questions. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what I can answer, but I'll answer as much as I can.
So this is for the construction of a new two-family home or this is?
Correct.
Okay. And it's located on Sunset, Sunrise Drive?
14 Sunrise, 27th Florida Health approval.
It's the log home?
It's behind the log.
Behind the log home, okay. And it's on an existing lot. What size is the lot, Fay? 1.13.
And just for clarification, this is what brought up. We own the, the lot, the log home is on, and the parking lot, part of it's on the lot that poses the building. And in the future, I intend to do a lot line and move the, the line away and give them more property to the parking, for the log home. And that I intend to.
Why aren't we doing it now? Why aren't we doing it now?
I don't need to do that. I own those lots.
I'm just asking for the purposes of the submission.
What is, where, where's the log home in relation there? If you could point to.
Right here.
It's on that top side. Yeah, all right. So 55 is up on the top.
Both, both lots are corner, corner lots.
So right now, there's a current lot there and you're just proposing a, a house on it? Or you're, or this is actually a subdivision?
No, it's not a subdivision.
Okay. You're just proposing to put a house on an existing lot? Okay.
And it's an existing lot.
Okay.
The other part borders the bank, Fay?
I, I follow to the back end of that.
No, I know you, I know you, yeah, but the other part of the lot is borders the bank lot?
Yes.
Got you.
Yes.
So the driveway center is going to be more or less from, across from Nick's old house?
It's actually going to be facing the brook, the driveway. If you look, if you look at the map here, this is, this is Sunrise that comes off 55.
Right.
And the driveway is going to be here. You're not going to go around the corner. It's, it's on Sunrise.
Um, how, how would you characterize the property? Is it mostly wooded? Is it dry?
It's, 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 you know, young wood. It's not. There's, I think there's one thing marked on the plans, one substantial trees. The rest is like scrubbed and, you know.
And have you gotten the health department approval? Because it's already a lot?
I have health department approval.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I, I moved the septic. The septic originally was in the front of the house and it was designed in 1964.
Oh.
And I contacted the health department just to make sure everything's up to date. And they suggested that I move the location because now it's closer to the, it was closer to the stream. Yeah, so I moved it, we moved it down. And it's all approved.
Okay. Yeah, I figured because it's, it's, it's a lot. So it's, in order to have a lot, you have to have approved septic.
I thought it was approved originally, but I had to redesign.
Gotcha.
Is there, is there another lot on that block?
I'm sorry?
Is there more, another lot there?
At the enough, there's like eight lots between the log on the bank. But they were never ever really filed, but they're, you know, it's vacant between this, where I'm proposing. That's, that's an established lot.
Right.
And then the vacant land between there and the bank is all one piece.
Now you answered my question. I've just, I've just tried to orientate myself.
So what do you plan to do with the existing blacktop driveway?
Um, eventually I'm going to move the line and do it to my son. Enough to do that right now.
Okay.
Because that's where the log home is. So where is the driveway then?
Probably before I take occupancy.
Log is, log out?
Yeah, I see that there, but where is it here?
I think the log house is somewhere over here.
No, I know that, the driveway.
Oh, the new driveway is here, but this existing one is what I was asking about. That's the proposed new one and then that's the existing. That's what I was asking about.
And what I'm going to do is eventually take this line, move it here, right? And then I'm going to square it in the back.
Okay.
I'm going to give him this, but I don't have to do it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I will do it.
Right, right. What are those four little squares in the proposed driveway? Those four little rectangles?
Um, I think it's just showing where it's going to be, the little squares.
Those little recta?
It's supposed to represent cars, maybe?
Oh.
What we're wanting to do.
Oh, yeah, those are, yeah, because it's two-family, they have to allow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to have four parking spaces.
Oh, and this is.
Per code.
Okay.
It's town center.
Yeah, town center. That's allowable in town center, multi-family? Yeah, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, two fam, this is a two-family, so just, yeah, just to make the distinction, this is a two-family.
Yeah.
Our code is multi-family is, I believe, is three or more. So this is a two-family house, which is specially permitted use in the town center zone. Uh, single-family houses are not permitted in the town center zone.
Oh, so that's why, because we're not doing a subdivision, we're not doing a lot-line alignment. If you were just building a house that was permitted by Rite, they wouldn't be here, it would be.
Well, they, technically, you can't build a house, a single-family house, in the town center zone.
Oh.
So the two-family is a specially permitted use in the bulk, or the table of permitted uses. So that requires site plan a special use permit, even for something, you know, as relatively simple as just a two-family house, so.
On the, on the tax, if you look at the codes, except permitted uses and special use.
Right.
And most of everything in the town center is special.
Most everything, yeah. So basically, anything you do in a town center, you need to come.
Yeah. And, and just to follow up on that previous conversation, the original map that created these lots was 1964. I'm looking at it right now. And there were eight lots there that were approved at some point. But for whatever reason, the tax map now just shows it as one single one. So I don't know if they combined them or what. Somebody may have combined them at one point. You can, there's a process where if a filed map has been filed for five or more years and you own contiguous parcels, that you can just go there and say, I want to combine these into one tax parcel, so.
You can just go to the county clerk's office.
Yeah, so that may have been what happened there. I don't know that for sure. It's an assumption.
Took those lots into consideration where the old septic was, existed, you know, back in 1964, with the wells. So if we didn't approach on any of that, it's still viable.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Um, Dan, did you, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think there's a few things that we need to, to go through. So, um, and I'm sorry if I missed it. I was having a little side conversation for half a minute there. But one of the things that we noticed was, and this is a town center thing, is your front yard setback is zero to 15 feet. So right now, because of the configuration of this lot, Sunrise, you know, takes that hard 90-degree bend. So this is technically almost like what we would call a corner lot. But in, in, in a corner lot, you have two front yards. So the front yard along any part where Sunrise is has, is supposed to be.
But it's only one street.
Yeah, yeah. And then you choose the rear yard based on the orientation of the structure you're putting. And then you have one side yard. So you have two front yards, one side yard, one rear yard.
Got you.
That's how the code reads for corner lots. And that's, that's how I interpreted it. And by doing that, what I recognized was that the house would either need to be relocated into that front yard setback or seek an area variance. Uh, I'm told by planning here that the, the applicant has also submitted an application for area variance for the front yard. So that's going to become a zoning board of appeals matter. One of the other things I noticed in my review in terms of deficiency was the size of the, of the second unit within the house. So the one unit, we have a minimum livable floor area requirement of 800 square feet. It's almost exactly the opposite, basically, of our accessory apartment thing, right? Which is a maximum 800. So what it's saying is that if you have a minimum, for any primary structure and either of these units would be considered a primary unit, it'd have to be a minimum 800 square feet. And I roughly calculated about 630 square feet for that one living unit. So that is also subject to, of the zoning board of appeals application that was submitted. So there's, they're seeking relief of the 170 square feet there in terms of the minimum livable floor area. Some of the other points, I mean, most of these are, you know, a lot of these are just cleanup type things. But kind of to our point before with the, with the accessory apartment, you know, how we talked about trees and lighting and garbage enclosure and stuff, those are all in here. So, you know, the board would need to talk about whether they have outdoor lighting and things like that. We just kind of need a spec on it or whatnot and it can be shown.
We addressed the lighting. We have lights on the, the corner.
On the house, yeah, we've got floodlights.
Yeah, so you, you need to, you basically need to tell us that, you know, what the spec is on them. They, they really need to be dark sky compliant, things like that. So, you know, those are always the important things for the outdoor lighting. A normal floodlight is not normally accepted. But if it's LED and if it's shielded and it has, you know, dark sky complacency, then we would normally accept something to that effect. But if it's LED, and if it's shielded, and it has, you know, dark sky complacency, then we would normally accept something to that effect. So, just whatever the spec is, just make sure it's clear on the plan. Uh, you know, we talked about garbage enclosure on this one as well. Uh, we talked about some landscaping, there's, there's a typical landscaping thing. In terms of, uh, town center, one fifty-five dash nine. So this section, I didn't wanna necessarily go through every single standard within the town center, because I thought it would be more useful either if the board did or, or whatnot. Cause, you know, a lot of the thoughts in the town center, uh, standards are really related to, you know, town center, the main drags. This is, this is one of the last parcels there. Uh, but some of the things you need to consider would be, you know, sidewalks, um, uh, again, lighting. Some, you know, some of the things, talk about benches.
Trees.
Um, outdoor trash receptacles. A lot of those things, you know, clearly don't make a lot of sense for a residential property like this. So if you'd like, I can, I can open up one fifty-five dash nine and just run through some of those standards. And because the board, uh, you do have the latitude to allow modifications to town center standards.
Yeah.
And, and one of those actually is always about where the parking is, so they like to see the parking in the back, so. In a, in a situation like this, the parking's in the front of the structure here, and, and the building's set further back.
Right.
That's probably more in line with what you're gonna find on the residential, uh, structures along sunrise. You know, you're not gonna have a house up to the zero to fifteen.
Yeah.
This, this would actually be the only potential property, I think, on that part. Um, unless those eight lots, you know, so the four, there's four along fifty-five, and there'd be four along sunrise. Unless those four were ever to be developed individually. So right now, it's, it's a big vacant parcel with, uh, it's all pretty much wooded, as far as I can tell from the aerial here. So, um, if, if that's how the board wishes to go through, we could go through some of those standards for the town center and, and, and that, that way they have some guidance on where they need to go from here.
It's basically gonna be a residential.
Yes, it's residential, uh, you know, technically a two-family.
Right, so it seems to me that a lot of common sense should go into, um, meeting some of the standards, if you will, or dropping some of the requirements.
Right, so, um-
You know, I don't think, I don't think that they need a sidewalk in front, for instance.
Well, you'd be going in front, you'd be coming from nowhere, oh, then.
Huh?
It'd just be, it'd just be there.
We did the same thing with the orange.
And it's gotta continue on to the house.
We made them do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know-
You have to be consistent.
Some of the things we've done with that in the past would be, you know, uh, I think we did a, a deed restriction, or, uh, maybe it was a covenant restriction on a deed, where if the neighboring property ever was developed and had a sidewalk, then you would agree to put it in within X amount of time. So that, that's something that could be considered, cause at the end of the day, the eight acres between this property and the Keybank could, in theory, become a, you know, commercial mixed fe- mixed-use establishment.
I have no problem with a sidewalk, and when the eight acres-
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure it would make a lot of sense right now, but-
When we first started encountering this issue.
Yeah.
There was a couple of applications, and we've handled it, we decided, we made it deliberate. We had a big discussion about it, and we talked about, um, if you're, I, I think a lot of the applications were asking not to do it. And then, and what we decided at the time is, alright, let's give them the option, and if they decide not to do it, we need to have a way in the deed that, I think, like you said, it's either a deed or a long-term bond, I don't know. It wasn't a bond, right?
I don't think we had a long-term bond.
It was covenant, yeah. Just, and we gave them the option. Now, now, some actually, Dollar General actually opted to put the, put, put the sidewalk in.
Yeah, and I, I think that one we kinda felt was more important to, to kinda make that start. Now, you know, just, just for your own thought process on this, you know, jet management is before us now, and that sidewalk goes up to that, and they're supposed to extend that.
Yeah.
You know, next time they come back to us, I'm not sure when that's gonna be.
That's along Route fifty-five.
Right, yeah, that's true, that's true.
This is setback off Route fifty-five. It is essentially a resi- at this point, it is a residential area.
Yeah, I, I think we apply judgment each time.
Yeah.
And, and, and in the case where it's right on fifty-five, and there's an actual sidewalk next to it, where it makes it more clear to us that, yes, let them continue the sidewalk at the time. But, um, for this area, there's no sidewalk now, um, but I think we would wanna require the provision through a deed covenant in the event that they, we develop all that area, and it becomes the intense town center development, where you wanna have a walkable community. That's the whole idea behind the sidewalk. So would you have any objection to doing it in the covenant?
No, no.
Which would you prefer, to do it in the covenant, or, or do a sidewalk?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Which, which would you prefer, given the option? Do, ha- doing the sidewalk now, or having it as a covenant? I see. Alright.
And that would, you would agree if, if the eight-acre parcel, or remnants of it, or whatever, if it's subdivized, were, were to be developed, or set? Okay, that, that would be the, one of the design standards there, that were discussed in one fifty-five-nine. Another is blocks and lots, that's not really applicable to this, uh, cause we're not laying out new streets and blocks here. Streetscape standards, we're not, uh, you know, constructing any streets here. Uh, landscaping is, is always an issue again, so it, it kinda goes back to my site plan comment about landscaping, you know, so. You know, most, most houses, you know, people do shrubs and whatever else, I don't know if we wanna get into the minutia of that, or do, you know, any street trees along the front where it's cleared. There is septic system that's gonna be in the way of doing street trees at the corner, let's say, but, um, you know, that's, I'll leave that up to you guys, if you wanna try to have some, uh, landscaping or shrub, shrubs and trees or whatnot.
Hmm. I mean, we've been asking, we've been asking them to do street trees in the town center. So, um, I see what you're saying about the septic, though, you're right up against the edge of the line.
Yeah, you see in the, the bottom left corner there of the map.
Yeah, the expansion field also.
Maybe just on the one side, where the, except the other frontage, that's coming from fifty-five, to do a couple of-
And there's one very large tree there, that I think is-
Twenty-four inch?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you-
There are also, you say?
You could add past that, and, yeah. Maybe a couple of trees, one on each sidewalk, part of, one on each of the, side of the si- of the driveway?
But setback far enough for a road line of sight?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a particularly good point on that, Pete, because it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's a pretty, uh, sharp turn right there, so. Being able to kinda look through that corner would be good for sight distance purposes and safety.
Yeah.
Alright, so maybe a couple of street trees by the driveway, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, spaced equally, you know, to match that twenty-four inch tree. So it might be set off the driveway by ten feet or something, so that it's twenty feet away from the twenty-four inch tree, and then gives you twenty-four, twenty, you wanna try to match, if you're trying for the street tree, look, you wanna try to match the distances as best you can.
So is there gonna be a landscaping design submitted?
I'm, we're just in discussion now, so.
Yeah, I mean, it should, it should be reflected on the plan, um, because it's a requirement in the code, so if, if, if there's a couple of street trees proposed, they, they should be shown the location, and then the, uh, and then the species of tree, this, the caliper of the tree, you know, a detail on how to plant it. And, and also, um, you know, we, we always require maintenance as well, so we have a certain note on one fifty-five dash forty-seven with regard to landscaping maintenance, it's, uh, uh, that the landscaping that's approved by a planning board shall be maintained in perpetuity for the life of the site plan. And it's just designed to, to try to make it so that if something does die fifteen years from now, you still have to replace that tree, so. Okay?
Rob, what kind of tree would you like to plant?
Over there, I mean, uh, red maples are always like a, a very, um, uh, a plant, that, a red maple would, would have the best chance of survival. I love sugar maples. If I'm, you're asking my personal opinion, you should, uh, you should use your personal opinion. Yeah. So red maple, sugar maple. Um-
Two good choices there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are-
Red oaks are nice, but they may not be as sturdy as a ma- as a red maple.
It's finding the parcels a little wet, right?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Red oak will do, oak will survive.
Yeah, they're pretty tough, too, so, red oaks. Yeah, red maples are nice.
Uh, so design standard E is lighting, so we kinda already touched on lighting a bit here, so just-
So what do they do if the floodlights don't work?
Well, I, like I said, I, I'll look for a spec on it, they, they need to provide it to me. Spoon-feed me with, have the specification, and then that way I can determine, you know, through the spec, if it's dark sky compliant, or whether it's shielded, and, uh, you know, LED, the, the color temperature. Oftentimes, it's appropriate to have a softer light, like, we don't want those harsh five thousand K lights, or six thousand K lights. You know, if you can keep it in the twenty-seven hundred to three thousand K, it's a more natural light, a little less, uh, hard, I guess I'll say. So that would be good.
Did you say residential lighting, or commercial?
Well, it's, it's, you know, what they're gonna have, probably, my, could be wrong, but near each entrance, you know, I mean, just about everybody has a light near their entrance to their door. So there's gotta be some sort of lighting there, and, uh, you know, whether or not that goes out into the parking, if they wanted lighting near the parking or not, you know, they just gotta make sure it doesn't really spill over into the, into the right-of-way or onto other properties in as much as possible.
Okay.
So, that, that would be the thing I'd be looking for in the review.
It's really just, it's two single, it's like two units, it's, uh, not really commercial, it's not like a restaurant.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Residential.
I want, I think you want more residential lighting than, uh,
Yeah.
than, uh, commercial lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, that, you can do that with sconces or other things that can be still dark sky compliant, but have residential look, let's say.
Yeah.
So I leave that up to them, that's, it's just, the comment is there for lighting. And, uh-
Fly a drone, Faye, between, fly a drone between six and, uh,
Yeah.
Alright, six and six.
How high are you would be like lighting?
What else, Dan?
Uh, standard F is the furniture and waste recepti- receptacles, so.
Yeah, if I was here, I would put, I would say, none of these lights.
Uh, yeah, but I think this is more in relation to like a streetscape for town center, where you would have benches and, you know, trash for people that are walking from store to store or whatnot.
The motel?
Yeah, so, so, um, that one doesn't seem very residential to me, um, but I'll defer to the board. Uh, in this, this case, they also talk about on-street parking. This doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because we're not building a new road. If we're, if we're building a new road, then you would provide enough width for some, for some parallel parking spaces. In this case, if you park on the street, you're gonna be blocking sightlines around a curve that's pretty sharp.
Yeah.
I would not suggest any on-street parking because of that.
That's a good point. Plus, they've accommodated enough parking for the house, uh, inside the lot.
Right.
Faye?
Yes.
You said that at some point, you're gonna move the, uh,
The lot.
Line.
Yeah.
You pointed to Rob, which way you were gonna move it.
This line here, he's, he's gonna put it here. And then shift it over here, and then move this one back a little.
I guess where I'm going is you'd have access.
What's that, Dan?
You're gonna take, what are you gonna do, take this line and go like this with it eventually?
Um, let me see, Peter. Why am I? This, this line here, right? And the log home's there, I'm gonna pull it over here, and give Christopher this land, and then I'm gonna, um, e- even it in the back.
Okay, so in relation to the existing parking and everything.
Right, right.
Where's the lot line, the new lot line is going to-
It's gonna take up-
Encompass some of it.
Most of it.
It's go- the new lot line is going to encompass some of the parking on your side?
On the log home side, it's gonna take most of it, cause it's gonna come like this.
Right, but there's still gonna be-
Yeah, a small amount, and this is where the, um, I'll, I'll keep it, you know, this is where they come in to get the garbage.
Where what?
The garbage truck comes in.
Right. Okay, so there's gonna be, even once you move the lot line, there's going to be exist-
A small.
There's gonna be existing off-road parking, if you so-
Yeah, you could, yes, exactly, right there.
Right, and I take it that it's good, you're not gonna put up a fence between the log, log home and the proposed house?
No.
Is it gonna be a lawn area?
Yes.
Alright, so it's a no-brainer. You pull in, if you need exi- if you need additional parking, you pull into the existing parking area, and you walk across the lawn.
Right.
To, um, to the, uh, proposed new house.
Or, or down to the road and up. Or you could come down to the road and walk up the driveway, or across the lawn.
Right.
Whichever.
Yep.
Alright.
Well, I think it's an issue.
We're close to ten o'clock, so is, is there any relations?
There's a, there's a couple other things here, sorry to say. Um, so we've gone through the, the design standards for town center, I think we got that documented here. Um, about the driveway, um, you know, I had mentioned in here that there's a couple other things that could be done. I mean, you could do a declaration of easement, or a lot line alteration, as Faye has mentioned, or, you know, just a removal of the encroachment, that could be considered as well. But I think in terms of just leaving it now, when you know that it's over the line, I think there has to be something either put into a resolution, or something that, there should be a timeframe associated with that. Just because I, I think you have to cover those bases if, if this property is sold, or that property is sold.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, and maybe, maybe it's tied to, uh, having to be done before sale, I don't know. I, I'm just throwing it out there. Um, obviously, like, the best way to fix it would be to fix it now, but, um-
Well, I would teach you, but it just, I'm doing an awful lot right now.
Yeah.
I gotta have a survey, but I can do that, I mean, I could start on that, there's no problem. If I could get it done before the CFO, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, just a thought at least to, you know-
It's an issue for CFO.
You know, what we could, yeah, it could be, it could be that you come back for the lot line realignment before the CFO, is that what you're kind of saying?
I think I could get it done in that one, which I'm ready.
You know, that could be, that could be a way to address it. Okay.
Alright, yeah.
I guess feel about that idea.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll at least be able to get you to, to get the construction part going. Um, there's also a shed that's over the line?
It won't be one, I don't think.
So if you, if you end up moving the lot line, okay, so it's the same situation, so the driveway and the shed, I think we'll have to just note-
It's the same with the end.
Right now you are, but- Right now you are, but, but one of those parcels gets sold, and now we have a, a situation where people come to us and say, "Why did you allow that shed to be over the lot line?" So, you, you just gotta protect our, the town as well.
Yep.
Um, I did put it, made an error on my note number nine. It should've said involves the construction of a two-family residential. I put a simple lot line, but it's type 2 action, is my point.
Okay.
And that does not change based on my error there.
So, we don't have to review a seeker again, thank God.
Right, that's a type, that's a type 2. We don't have to go through that. On a future, on the future plan, you're in the aquifer overlay zone, so 155-12D has standards. We always have the applicant put them on the plans. We have them put a response to those standards, and then the planning board gets to consider those, your responses. They may alter your responses, but that's how they make the, a decision on those standards. And number seven is kind of important, seems kind of crazy as well, but any new construction within the town center, the planning board is the de facto architectural review board. So, you have the pleasure of reviewing the architecture of this project.
Yeah.
Did you, did you wanna give any input now? I think, technically, I, I think that would be helpful for them, but...
I, yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're having a discussion, this is the first time we're seeing it. Can we look at it the next?
Let's do it the next time.
If you've got it here now, this is a, this is a shed.
Basically, it's, it is vinyl, but it's a vinyl sheet, it's expensive.
That's for the siding and the roof?
It's siding.
Okay.
And then you have just...
That's, okay.
With a white sheet.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, I like that shake, looks nice, yeah.
It's very expensive.
It's vinyl? Is that what you said?
Yeah. It's a cedar blend, so it's, like, instead of getting 30 square, you gotta get like, you know, 10 square, or 1, 10 square, you gotta put it together.
And it's put together piece by piece.
Um, yeah, and make, just some initial impressions. The fact that it's, it basically looks like a single-story home, so it's not high, I think it fits within the character of the community, you know, as opposed to doing like a tall, big, big house. So, um, but, alright, no, we can, we can continue the discussion going forward.
I think my point, at least on that, would be if you, if you saw something that you were just absolutely offended by, in terms of the architecture, you know, it would be good and appropriate to just mention that now, if you should, if you happen to see something, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I never, I mean, I'm gonna have to put this on record, I've never felt like we're qualified as an architectural board, the planning board. I kind of don't like that we have that dual role. I feel that the town board should have a separate architectural review board, with people who have experience in architecture. You know, John's got, he's very good at his commenting, but...
To clarify, as an observer looking in, they had an architectural review board.
Did you?
And there has to be a reason why they're no longer as an architectural review board, and I think it's the same reason as why this board, two years ago, was a seven-member board operating with five members. It is hard to get volunteers for public service to do this type of work.
Yeah, so...
And that's why I believe that things were, uh, the ARB, uh, was dropped and assigned to the planning board.
And the way it works in the code, and this, this is kind of why it defaults to you, is because the architectural review board, if you go to chapter two of our town code, it's all about the architectural review board. What it says is that the architectural review board advises.
Right.
So, it, it makes a suggestion. Ultimately, the planning board still votes on that.
Yeah.
Now, to Rob's point, if you've got an advisory board, and, you know, you feel like they're very competent, then you would just say, "Yes, okay, I don't have to worry about looking at this." So, you know, there, there happens to be a council person here right now, so maybe, you know, this won't fall on deaf ears, but maybe, maybe you can find some people that would be interested in volunteering for the town, and we establish that board.
I, I agree with Peter. It's tough to get people to volunteer for that, but I don't think we should stop trying. I think we should try for it, try to start a board, even if it's only a five-person board, and, because us doing sort of a half-ass job isn't all, isn't doing justice to the town either. So, if we, if we're gonna be it, then we gotta do it right, and I, I feel like we don't devote enough attention to it, and that's because we're, we have too many job tasks already, so.
But I'll, if I can just input one thing?
Sure.
I think you guys did a great job with, like, say, like, if you look at the Dollar General and stuff, I mean, there's some, there's some things that you guys have done that I think are really admirable, so.
Thank you.
I think, for what it's worth.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thanks.
I think we have a desk job again.
Yeah. Alright, so we're...
So, in terms of process, you know, the, the board could formally declare that the action would be type 2, that would conclude the seeker process.
That's a pretty benign, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to declare the action type 2.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys discussed the town center design principles, so that, that was done, that was number two. Number three, discuss proposed architectural, so you've done that as well. Number four, I suggested you could grant sketch site plan approval. Obviously, the big condition would be that they're going to the zoning board of appeals, so if, if they don't get the variance, they're gonna come back with a plan that's a little bit different, at which point you could simply resend your sketch approval, and then redo a sketch approval at that point, if you wanted. So, it's up to you if you want to do that now, or not.
Let me, let me ask my board, fellow board members, are we prepared to grant sketch approval?
No.
Or vote on?
Yeah.
You are? Okay.
With a condition, under zoning support, you know.
Sure. What about you, Pete?
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Claude.
You're gonna just send me one, huh? Not seeing the rest of it?
Well, we'll still, I think we'll still have time to review more. This isn't, it's just sketch approval. We still have, and we're gonna have to go through a public hearing also?
Yeah, and that, that would be the other item that I said you could, you could consider setting a date for the public hearing. The, my understanding is that the zoning board meeting...
It's alright, if you feel that way, you know, just don't know. I mean, it's...
It's sketch, though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, um, you know, I, I think I've heard enough, I'm prepared to move forward, so, um, do I have a motion to grant sketch approval?
Also move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Roll call, vote.
Hearing no, none, roll call, vote. Jason?
Yeah, I'll go. Aye.
Rob Lopene is aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, I'm supposed to, yeah, alright, good. Unanimous. Alright, so, sketch approval, what else?
And you could consider setting the public hearing for October 16th, and just, what I was just looking up was, just I wanted to make sure, the, the zoning board of appeals meeting for October happens on, I believe, the 9th? Just trying to check this. It's the 7th?
The 7th.
The 7th?
The 7th.
It's the 7th, October 7th. So, that would happen before the public hearing, so you would know what the zoning board of appeals determination is at that point. So, if there was...
So, here's the thing, I will likely not be at the next meeting. I'm gonna be in New Orleans on...
Sounds good.
The 16th. Yeah, so, in light of that, and in light of there being some...
Is that where a relegated rally is?
I'm, I'm gonna find out. I'm gonna wrestle one for you, if you want.
Okay.
Um, so, I don't know if we're gonna have a quorum, because with two of the members recusing themselves?
Sure.
Me not there, I don't know if we're gonna have a, a quorum for this.
Right.
So, I, I would suggest maybe having a discussion, you could continue the discussion, but I won't be able to be there, so.
That's unacceptable. You're traveling too much. You're not on vacation.
I think it'll be my fifth meeting missed in 14 years.
Yeah, I mean, so, the, the options would be, you could set it, and if there are three, you know, you could always go through straw poll-type voting, like, things, just to make sure that, everybody...
Three still?
You would, you would have a quorum, because the, it's, the board is five members.
You need three for a quorum.
So, you just need three, alright, I'm getting a little punchy.
Yeah, three, bad Jason, Peter.
Alright, if you wanna do the public hearing, then we can, are we in a rush? Are we, you wanna get this moving, pretty quick?
I wanna get my husband home.
Okay, I hear that.
So, I'll give you flights.
Okay. Um, I will be on a plane at that time, but, um, alright, so, we're, we're gonna have a discussion that night, and then potentially the public hearing, and then, and then we can go from there.
Yeah.
You're setting a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, it would be setting a public hearing for October 16th, and, you know, worst, worst-case scenario is you don't have a quorum for that, in which case, it would be adjourned to the next month.
Alright, and to be fair, 'cause I ask all the, we ask all the applicants from here on, do we have enough information in the drawings to have a public hearing? Is that, you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think so. A lot of the, a lot of the, I, I'm gonna rely on you guys to, to come through with submittals on certain things, particularly, things that public tend to really care about would be the lighting, the landscaping. Those things are really important, in terms of review for public hearing purposes, and then also just be prepared to have your architectural there as well, because some people may ask questions about the architectural.
There are two adjourned neighbors.
I'm sorry?
Two neighbors?
There are two adjourned neighbors, I own a van, and then there's a commercial property, a shop.
Yeah. Well, you're gonna have a 500-foot radius, so, because the site plan, special use permit, we have 500-foot radius here, so.
We started...
Yeah, but it's also in the paper, so anybody, you know, you know, Mr. Crane might show up.
I know, so, I'm planning trees.
Right.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for October 16th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Approved.
Okay. That's why I think we can do procedurally for you.
That's why I'm telling you about those issues. Have everything ready on the drawings. They came with pretty detailed drawings.
The website says that. If you look through it, it's like, yeah, it's...
Yeah.
That would be the first, that would be the second.
Okay, next on the agenda is the water wheel?
Minimal at best.
Yeah, yeah. And not speaking about any project in particular, but what would, what would prevent a public hearing without any action if we didn't have a quorum?
You can't.
Well, if you, if you didn't have a quorum, you couldn't have a meeting, but specific to the fact that there's gonna be members that would be recusing themselves, you know, you could technically be having a regular meeting, but then a, a specific item would have to be maybe kicked down the line.
That's what I was worried about.
Yeah.
You're gonna be at the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you just gotta make one comment.
Yeah.
Usually, it's incumbent, if they're gonna be nays, it's incumbent for that person to actually put the reasons on the record.
Right.
Alright, so I just wanna remind the board to do so.
Right. Were there any nay votes tonight?
No.
No.
No, yeah. You have to have a legitimate legal reason for a no vote.
Just be prepared for that.
Oh, yes.
Based on the record, because it's gotta be on the record.
Well, I can't imagine anybody not knowing that at this juncture of our time together.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to inform the board and the public. I have not a strong relationship with the applicant, but I did give him some beans from a barn.
Uh huh.
No monies were exchanged, we have no financial relationship, and I feel I can be impartial. If anybody has any further questions or concerns?
I don't think that qualifies, yeah.
I just wanted to disclose.
No, I appreciate that. I, I eat at his restaurants, I've been to his vineyards. I make wine, but I think mine's better than his, so, I don't...
I don't know, I taste it, it's pretty good.
My grappa, too, you're gonna have to taste it. It's better than Ephraim's.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so, anyway, welcome.
Okay, thank you. My name's Mike Spaccarelli, 236 Beepin' Polquay Road, Water Wheel Vineyards, and I'm here to, here what you guys have to say.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, I went, I read through everything, and I have one confusing question, alright?
Shoot.
Why is he here? Number one.
Yeah.
Number two is, I don't understand why agricultural, I know he needs to receive that designation, 'cause it, it's lapsed, alright? But, we're, we've permitted agricultural businesses to operate in R-45 zones, alright? There's one right down the road?
Yeah.
That we just extended, so, if we could start there?
Well, I don't necessarily think that there's full planning board approvals in place on other R-45 parcels.
Right, okay, yeah, alright, well, we'll leave that there. But, we did get beyond the point where approvals are, are what, eminent, or none? I mean, we've gone through the public hearing, we've, we...
My, well, let, let me, let me...
Let's forget that, and just focus on this.
Exactly, so, let, let me just focus on, you know, certain things here. So, we have an application where the applicant gave us an in-depth narrative of a number of activities that would be happening on the project site, and, you know, similar to other projects, like, for example, CartRight, we had an event, event-type thing for weddings and things like that, they had to go through a special use permit process, because there was a certain section of the code that allowed that in the C2 zone, CartRight parcel, C2 along 55, for example. So, that's a good example of that, you know, sales, things like that are not allowed on R-45 without permitting. So, despite agricultural processes going on, on a site, you still have to meet underlying zoning. Now, I had a very informative conversation, myself and the building inspector, we spoke to the agricultural navigator, who works at Dutch County Department of Planning and Development. She's very informed on how these things work, and she, she emphasized to me that it is absolutely true that despite being in an agricultural district, underlying local zoning still needs to be maintained.
Period.
Period.
Right.
So, that just needs to be super clear to everybody, in this town particularly, 'cause we always seem to hear this, "Well, I'm ag." "Well, I'm ag." "Don't worry about it, I'm ag." You know, that's not the way it works. You still need to get zoning, you still need to have building permits, important things like that. So, it's just important to, to recognize that, and then understand, you know, based on what the, the narrative was, and we had some nice discussions with the county, I had some nice discussions with Mr. Spaccarelli, too, just because I, I didn't want him to feel like, when I sent this letter, that he'd be surprised, you know, so I, I had a lot of, I've done a lot of research on this at this point, and, and in my discussion with agricultural navigator, we spoke about the evolution of agriculture, you know, particularly, you know, particularly, you know, I grew up in Ulster County, I know of a ton of farms now that just do main events and things like that, they're a main source of income anymore as opposed to, say, the apples and the pumpkins and everything else, so, you know, just to be supportive of agriculture and agricultural education and the tourism that it can bring in, you know, sometimes a code can become antiquated, you know, we had to add things into our code for, you know, windmills and solar, because that's where things were going, you know, and similar to that, it seems like it would be appropriate to start figuring out a way, being that we're a very rural and agricultural town, to start considering ways to allow these types of supportive activities for agricultural projects that are in residential neighborhoods. So to me, it makes sense, and again, I'm not a lawmaker here, I'm just an advisor, but to me, it makes a lot of sense if we would start considering, you know, some local law legislation that would permit this, but also still provide, you know, neighboring residents with some protections, because when you're a resident that lives, you know, neighboring in a residential and you have to deal with, you know, and I'm not saying this is you, but, you know, weddings can get loud and you wanna have a peaceful time at your home, you know, so you don't live in a commercial zone, you live in a residential zone, so there needs to be some protections regarding to view sheds, protections with regard to your wells, your septics, you know, lighting, landscaping, light, sound, you know, so there's a lot of things that need to be considered and it just seems to make sense to me that the town start approaching some kind of thought process on how that can be done now.
But you're saying, you're saying that where he's located is.
R-45.
It's in the R-45.
Okay, it's R-45, but also, he abuts sugar maple.
Yeah.
And, fine, there's a house in between.
Yep.
But he also abuts an apple orchard.
Yep.
And.
Autobody store is right down the road and Town Hall and.
Prior to the development of Dalton, that whole area was beef and horse.
Right, so what I don't understand is exactly what he's alluding to, how agriculture predated residential. I mean, agriculture was here first and then residential housing came in after. I buried in my parents' backyard, you know, it was an R-45.
I mean, I'll give you the answer, right?
What is it?
The answer is, is that that's not in our zoning code.
Oh.
Just because you happen to have a property that's not next to an actual house, doesn't mean that they couldn't be houses in the future as well, right?
Say that again?
Doesn't mean that those other properties couldn't be houses in the future as well, so.
Right. I'm not following him. If somebody.
They can be developed for houses.
Re-explain it.
Neighboring properties could be developed for houses.
Neighboring properties could be developed for houses. Like what, for example?
Like a farm.
Oh, a farm.
Sugar maple farm could be a bunch of houses someday.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So could the apple orchard.
Right.
So the fact that a parcel is residential, but it's not really located to any houses now, does not mean that it's not subject to the zoning code.
Right.
Right, understood.
So just to be clear, you can't just arbitrarily say, "Well, you know, it's probably not gonna be an issue there, so let's just let them do whatever", that's just not the way it works.
Also, and I'm just making a judgment based on knowing the location of the building facilities, okay, there is a buffer between the road and the, probably the facilities, where is venue is it? Where, if he's proposing something where there would be party, be events, I think there's gonna be, this is why there's gonna be sufficient buffer between the event and the, basically in the general public.
And that would be great supporting evidence for you to say during a site plan and special use permit approval process.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so he has no permits for anything? No approvals?
No, no, he's got permits for the short-term rental and all that, but.
So he has, alright, that predated our short-term rental laws, right? So he was grandfathered in?
I don't know that.
No?
He still has to comply with his short-term rental.
I'm sorry?
That is a law, that's a local law.
Right, but he was up and up.
So financing and registration is required, so if I could just add a couple of things that you said about farms predating, you know, neighborhoods, and that has been traditionally the case, and there's been a lot of lawsuits that have come about where people who have come into neighborhoods that were established after the farms were already there have actually sued to stop the farms from creating noise, dust, manure, manure is a big thing, you know, manure smells and things like that that can be carried over the wind, those are typical agricultural, you know, considerations and practice of farming, but in this particular situation, it's like a reversal of that, where, you know, a farm is actually trying to come back and become a farming again, you know, and that is a consideration you may be asked to consider by the town board if in fact they refer the matter back to this board for advisory opinion on a zoning change, alright?
So literally a zoning change needs to occur?
No, it's not a zoning change, because in this case, there's no adjacent zones that support this, the activities in our code.
Confused, I mean, yeah, sugar, well, sugar maple, Cartwright, Barton, what I'm confused about is that all of those are in R-45 zones, no?
Cartwright's got C2, but.
C2. I'm confused also that the Airbnb business was open prior to the law. Isn't that, so he was operating an Airbnb business before we wrote the short-term rental law?
I don't know.
I believe that's true. Is it?
Regardless, I think.
Regardless, yeah.
It is.
You still have subject to.
One thing I would point out though is that agriculture obviously remains a big part of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, very much so, and their, on their application, I mean, wine, Spaccarelli's are known for honey, there's no internet cafe, there's no market, there aren't any electrical vehicle charge stations, we're talking straight agriculture with events like Cartwright's, right, and we put a lot of, say, conditions, lighting, sound, et cetera. I'm still confused why zoning is an issue, maybe I'm a little thick, Dan.
No, it's just, it's just, we have a table that says, "This is what you can and cannot do on a parcel, depending on its zoning", and these are not listed as permitted uses for this zone, so to me, it's pretty cut and dry.
It couldn't be just a special use authorization, given his.
No, no, because our table of uses also has specially permitted uses, like a two-family site in town center has a specially permitted use.
So how did his neighbor heading?
Didn't ask me this.
Yeah, how did his neighbor, okay.
Don't ask.
How did his neighbor, right, heading west accomplish what?
I don't know if that predated, I don't know, I don't know the whole history of.
Well, don't you think our job is to deal with what we have at hand?
It is, it is, it's not to make comparisons to what other people have done, whether they leave or.
I'm just trying to establish a precedent or why, why this is different than Cartwright's and, you know, what am I missing?
I think you have an applicant who wants to make it right.
Yeah, he's trying to do the right thing.
And, you know, that should be applauded.
Okay. I don't know if anyone knows, but the history of my property, the reason why I needed the water wheels, because.
Mike, use the microphone, please.
Once was owned by the Roosevelts, I believe, right?
Right, right.
So I think the town historian didn't even know that I owned the original water wheel that's in his town that serviced the Roosevelts, so that's what this whole place is based upon, you know, and bring the tourism here to see that and enjoy a glass of wine, see the place, we've been getting raging reviews of the place and that's what we're here for, bring tourism here, bring people here to Poquay, and I plan on, in the future, getting a wine judged as a New York State wine, put Poquay on the map, Beekman on the map, you know, for this, and we've been diligently working hard to get this place done and it's been a pride accomplishment, so just telling you that, you know, up to you guys, you know, I'm here to do whatever we have to do.
And I think Dan and I grew up on a farm and I've heard many people tell me, "Oh, no, you have a farm, you don't need permits", and that's a general feeling, because your agriculture, well, that's not really right.
I mean, if I could opine.
Yes, you may.
You have a pretty cool place over there.
Thank you.
It's very interesting, the wine, I'm sure my father would love to go over and talk to you about it, but the thing that I think is really the issue to me is what we define agriculture as. Our town nearly tore, got torn apart when the McIntosh Farm became a deer farm.
Yeah.
And really, the debate landed on what's agriculture and what's not, it really comes down to what people believe a farm is, right?
Right, right.
And as a community, I think we have to have that debate on, alright, what is a farm? Is a farm, I think a lot of people who live around the big farm in our town don't think that helicopter rides is a farm, okay? That's more entertainment, you know, so where do we draw the line? Is it, you know, our code says agriculture is, you know, growing crops and tending livestock, and I think a lot of people would probably concur that's a farm, or wouldn't dispute that as a farm, and if they chose to live next to that and a tractor's starting early in the morning and they're upset about that, well, that's too bad, that's a farm and that's what you, so, but I think we're starting to get to a point where we're, you know, these things are becoming event places and stuff, and that may be not what the neighbor signed on to.
And the problem is, in order for many, and I know a lot of them, farms to exist, they've gotta go commercial. They can't just ship milk to New York City.
Well, certainly, that's, yeah, that's the debate, is, I mean, that's the difficulty of today, how do you, how do you be a farm?
There is, yeah, there is actually an objective standard, according to the New York State Department of Agriculture, I forgot the name of the board, but.
Ag and.
Last time we dealt with this, yeah.
Ag and farm markets, ag and farm markets, yeah.
So what the, the property must do is it must take, use 51% of its crops and it has to be in the products, at least 51% of the crops in the products that they sell.
Alright, so that's a way to define it, right?
So if this is a winery, there should be, you know.
So 51% of the revenue has to be generated from the actual crops?
Yeah, 51% of the crops actually have to be in the product, so if he has grapes that he's growing there and he's using, you know.
We currently have 7,500 vines planted right now, five different varieties of wine. We picked today, I can show you pictures, we picked David Alblanc, which we're getting to be pretty known for, we actually picked it today, which is over 22 tons of grapes, so we're gonna produce.
The question is, do you import any grapes from outside and put them in your product?
No.
That's a good thing.
But that also goes to, you know, some of the other things, like catering, you know, are you gonna, you know, if you're, if you're creating a situation where you're having wedding venues, you're gonna have to be bringing in food or whatever else, we're talking about food trucks, so, you know, I just think we need to be a little proactive and start trying to adjust with the times, like I said, I think, and maybe that's kind of what Rob's point is, it's a little bit antiquated just to think of the old farm this way or that way, but we have to be able to, you know, protect the public and adjacent property owners while also supporting our farmers. We want to, I mean, in my opinion, and from what I've gathered from all my interactions in this town for 12 years or whatever it is I've been here, you know, we, we wanna support our farmers, but we have to do it in a responsible way, and so that's where, you know, we have a lot of ambiguity, could be considered in the code, if it's just, this is agriculture and you're allowed to do that in R-45, it doesn't say anything about bringing in food trucks, it doesn't say anything about putting up pop-up tents, it doesn't say anything about playing music, you know, so that has to be addressed, and my, my point, and again, I don't want you to think that I'm trying to be obtrusive here, but, you know, what's to stop somebody on a one-acre lot who gets an ag exemption because they have some honeybee things?
Well, it has to be 10 acres or more.
And now all of a sudden they're having huge events on their one-acre lot.
Well, it has to be 10 acres or more to get an ag disre- yeah.
For the ag disreferred, okay, that's fair.
Yeah, the, and the whole thing about the percentage of product, that is, it's a gray area, as long as he's using other locally-produced product, and then there's a whole thing about keeping inventory and all that sort of thing, but what I, what I'm, are you gonna have food trucks? Spaccarelli's have, I mean, you guys have.
We're born cooking, we're born with.
You have a truck?
No, we don't have a truck, we just, we just home-cooked meals.
Yeah, their food is, if you want a good Italian meal, you go to Spaccarelli's, you know, it's in, it's in Millwood.
Millwood.
Millwood is where it is, and then there's the winery up north.
So.
Benmore.
I just wanted to say that the planning board has, and I mentioned it in my letter, in 15571A, there, if the planning board can propose zoning changes, that would be suggested that the town board take up, so if you're really in favor of and supporting of ag, but understanding what I'm saying, which could become problems and has become problems and is problems in certain parts of town, then it's, it's a good time to, well, one now maybe, I don't know, if that's what you're saying.
I mean, Cartwright was not a problem, right?
But.
I don't think, John, I don't, I don't think Cartwright is a fair, a fair comparison, because they were, they're zoned commercial.
And they, and they went through the permitting process.
Are they town center?
No.
No, they're C2.
Commercial.
C2, and he could put a gas station there.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not, that, that commercial zone is the most wildly.
I guess what I'm not understanding is how that spot can be R-45.
You can't just, you guys can't approve anything.
I, I, we all want, I think we all wanna help agriculture, have farmers, most of all me, but it's what we consider a farm, and I think our community has to decide that.
And that could be part of a local law where, you know, that is well-defined, what those activities are and what a farm is, and then particularly with respect to residential properties.
I think what you need to do is look at it from this angle, and most people never do, because I grew up on a farm and I can't tell you how many people didn't think my father was a businessman, you gotta do a local law that's called agribusiness, that makes it clear there's gonna be agriculture, but there's gonna be a retail business side to it, and send it up that way, and, and put things in place to protect neighborhoods.
Right.
Maybe what you can do is just refer the applicant back to the town board for further, you know, for further.
And can we make a recommendation for them to?
You guys can make a recommendation.
They, you can make a recommendation, but you cannot.
Zoning for that area?
No, you can't do that because you haven't been asked by the town board to consider a zoning change.
Right.
That has to, you know, happen first.
No, the 15571A actually is a procedure that allows the planning board to suggest zoning changes to the town board. They can, they can specifically say, you know, "Hey, you know what?" They can, they can specifically say, you know, hey, you know what, say before solar was in our code, you could say, we got a lot of big parcels that solar might be available on, we should really, you know, hey, town board, we see this coming down the pipe, you better put something into place for it.
What is that signature?
15571A.
Well, you know, the other thing is, you know, if I were looking at a town and I wanted to make an investment, I wouldn't wanna have to go before the town board.
He's telling...
Oh.
So why is he here?
Because he's, he's trying to put in a site plan, especially use permit, a site plan application to make it right, but the problem is, is that he's not zoned for it.
How many houses, how many, how large is the R45 zone around the wheel?
Well, you gotta figure Sugar Maple.
Is that R45? I don't even know what R45 is.
It was just sold to New York State, New York State NIRA just bought it, it will be forever a horse farm.
Probably.
Yes, it's owned by Belmont, Saratoga.
But left and right of his property...
Well, there's a new project going in.
Also, that project, I'm surrounded by the Forever Greens.
That's down that way, Greens isn't R45.
And then Peter.
Peter...
It's R45.
Is R45, yeah. He's R45.
What's your point, John? What's your point?
Well, how are we gonna do this?
Well, you, I think you're, you're fixated on changing the zone.
Yeah.
I'm saying...
I'm just shocked that it was R45.
I'm saying add legislation into the code, zoning code, that allows this type of use on a residential zone property for agriculture, agribusiness.
That's if we want to. Let me just correct you for a minute, I'm not fixated on changing the zone, alright? I'm fixated on understanding, alright, why in an R45 zone, in an agricultural, and it it has a current district under OG, can you not run a farm?
Well, he actually does not have his ag district right now.
Well, I, what I'm, what I'm saying...
To be clear.
I know that, but he can get that.
I was ag.
Even if he was still in ag district, again, Agricultural Navigator made super clear, our local zoning supersedes the fact that you're in an agricultural district.
I get that.
So it doesn't give you carte blanche to do whatever you want on that property.
But for him, the issue is not that he's growing grapes, it's that he has a venue.
Restaurant, venue, that's the kind of stuff.
I kinda wanna stay focused on this.
Yeah, so could you please explain what percentage of your business...
Well, first of all, it's just, the procedure is this, you're gonna have to direct him back to the town board, alright, the referral has to come from the town board back here, alright, so then you'll have the consideration where you can be fact-finding and make the referral back to the town board.
Alright, I just assumed that being that he was here, there was something that we had to do with this application, you know, that's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, I'm totally confused.
Yeah, if you don't know why you're here, I don't know how you, we won't, you can't expect us to know.
Go up and have a glass of wine.
Did someone tell you to come here?
Yeah, he waited.
You should tell, to tell his brother we got him.
For a site plan, for parking and stuff, I think, that's why I'm here, make it all work, I'm here to do whatever you guys want me to do.
Over this again.
We got a beautiful place, I think, I think the town deserves it, and I think that everyone's enjoying it, so I don't know really why I'm here, I'm here because I thought I had to come here.
I think you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is unique, I'm sorry, I'm confused, alright.
Yeah, I'm confused too, but...
You can, you can make a recommend, what you can is direct the applicant back to the, and recommend that the town board take this up, you know, as a possible local law.
Craig, excuse me one second, you're, you're telling us what you think we should do, but we're asking...
No, we're giving options.
Let me, let me finish, please, you're telling, you're, you're giving us options on what you think we should do, but we're confused on why we're talking about this.
Yeah.
And that's what the answer we're looking for.
Was he coming before us for special...
Hey, let me just say, let me just, who put it on, let's start with who put it on the agenda, let's go from there. Why is this on the agenda?
It's a, it's a fair question. They asked to be on, appeared before the planning board, I had made a consideration of also saying whether or not should be on as well. What I found, and if you read this, you know, my letter, the, the town board, and this, because in my opinion, the only way forward for them is if there are some zoning changes.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're operating, they're doing some oper, they're operating a function out there that may not be considered legal, and we want to make that, we want them to come before the board to see if it's...
Correct, and and so part of that is, I think there's a path forward for them. It involves the town board making zoning changes. The town board can on its own initiative start a zoning change.
Yeah.
They can start a zoning change based on petition by a, a landowner. They can start a zoning change based on referral from the planning board. So I thought, since they put time together to put this plan together, if they come to the planning board, they could at least get some preliminary thoughts from you. Clearly, in my opinion, y'all want it to happen, which is great.
No, I don't think you're right about that.
I don't know.
I'm not sure, yeah, no, we haven't all talked.
Well, I wanna ask a specific question unless you're not done talking.
I wouldn't assume that, I wouldn't assume.
Rob, to answer your question though, there is a method under the code to just, it's gonna be a ping pong where he's going to the town board...
I get that.
Back to the planning board, and back to the town...
You wanna straighten out the procedure, totally, I agree, if he's gotta go to the board first and then they have to refer to us, I'm cool with that, I just wanted to make sure, but I wouldn't assume we're all on board with this, I wanna hear our community here, we, our community frankly, has complained a lot about the farm enterprises here, and specifically about the events that occur at the farm enterprises. So I know you're saying everybody loves it, I wanna believe you, but I just know the, I've been around here, I know how people have reacted to that, and and they, they think farms are a couple of sheep, some chickens, a cow, and that's cool, that's how they, they have a right to feel what they feel, you have a right to believe what you are, what you are, but I don't wanna go to the board and say, I'm not sure what I think it is, you should make a law to just make his thing sound right, I'm not ready to go there.
You can make a recommendation, just for the board to consider, you know, its options for a inclusional zoning for this type of business, that's all.
Yeah, I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna recommend that, I'm not, I'm not asking them to consider that.
Rob, you have a phone.
Well, that, that's the only way that, that there's gonna be a public hearing, and then you'd have jurisdiction over the application.
Um, alright, so he can go to the town, Mr. Spaccarelli can go to the town and petition the town to change the zone, I just don't, I don't wanna, I don't want you to represent the board in that decision, that's, because we may not all feel that way.
You're not making a predetermination.
Wait, if I may, so you're, you're, would the board, and I'm asking the board now, not agree with making a referral for a change to the town board at this point? Stravo.
For ag business.
A change to the definition of agriculture?
It doesn't matter what you think, because it's gotta, the legislation has to be created by the town board.
Well, what I'm confused about is that, I'm confused why the legislation isn't already in place, Dan is saying it's not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to accept the fact that he says it's not, but this isn't the type of business that we've been presented with in the past, this is a farm with occasional wedding events on it, on its property, alright, and there's a separate permit process for that, events in our town. R45 zone, you can have a farm stand, well, if you have a farm stand, you have to have a farm to put the product from into, right, if I said that right? What is, this man has a crop of grapes that is magnificent, honey, what am I missing here? I, I'm confused why...
It may very well be that he has a not-conforming...
Why are current R45 ag rules, what are they? What if...
Well, there's a myriad of options and what ifs, alright, that I'd rather not get into right now, but, you know, it, it could be that this farm has been there for 200 years, I don't know, alright, and if that's the case, it's not conforming pre-existing to zoning.
I'm just finding it shocking that we have to refer for a zoning change or a law change, given the way we operate and the emphasis on agriculture in our town.
It's exactly what Rob said before, what's the definition of agriculture, is the definition of agriculture having weddings and restaurants?
This actually has to go to...
Well, I have to say that you're starting from the wrong end of, I think, his business model, I don't know, because I, I would like to hear what is, I mean, I know it to be a vineyard, alright, if anybody doesn't know that a vineyard is an agricultural business, you know, then I can't help it.
You may, you may have to get an opinion, actually, from the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator may have to get involved here, alright?
Can I say something?
Sure.
A vineyard is, a vineyard is one of, one of the only agricultural things that they give you, the tax break, they give you three years to grow the grape in order to produce the grape, to make your $10,000, to become the agricultural asset.
Right.
May I suggest to the board?
But they also protect your right to sell and market the product that you grow.
Okay, Peter.
Alright, we have counsel for a reason, to advise us, we've had a discussion, I think we should leave it up to counsel at this point to handle things.
I think that's a good idea.
Counsel, counsel knows where we're going.
Sounds, I think, I think that's...
Thank you, it just has to go, all roads lead to the town board, alright?
Really, still at this point?
Absolutely.
All roads.
For now, unless the zoning administrator, you know, has a determination as to prior use.
The map that I included in my package to you guys, my property was hashtag agricultural from when I incorporated Water Wheel Vineyards in 2019, the map was still vile, that showed my property, hashtag, just like Sugar Maple Farm, Barton, my particular parcel, and that's what made me the drive, that made me wanna do what I did, invest into this property, and also the fact that it was once the Roosevelts, and it was once a farmer, and the water wheel meant a lot to me to keep that legacy going, so that's all started way before I was booted out of, to back to R45, so it's, was, the map will show you, and that's really what drove me to do what I did.
I just wanted...
I want a water wheel, X, T-shirt, X triple X.
Absolutely, you're all welcome to come down and have a glass of wine, I, I really appreciate you staying here this late for me tonight, it means a lot to me.
Thanks for staying with us.
So you know what you gotta do, you gotta go to the board, talk to Dan.
My head is scrambled right now, so someone's gotta direct me, well, thank you, alright, thank you, have a good night.
Alright, you too, thank you.
Troy?
Yes.
The Springs?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, second?
We got something to talk about, right? No? Okay, we're good.
Alright, second?
Oh, you forgot to mention the fire.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
It's okay.